Radio. Mic check? Uh, check on the mic, AGP. I don't have sound.
Creepies I'm getting tonight.
Hello, AGP? No sound.
Testing one, two.
Mic check, 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 check. Okay, there we go. Hey, just like the old days. All right. Just waiting for AGP.
We're in last minute.
All right, ready, welcome. Welcome, everybody, to our regular city council meeting on Tuesday, June 12, 2018. As always, we're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall and starting at 6 o'clock or thereabouts. And for the record, we do have a quorum. All members of council are present and we'll call the meeting to order. And if we can all just start out with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And with that, if Councilmember McPherson would lead us in the pledge.
.........................................................................................................
All right, moving on. Next items on the agenda, closed session report. And we have no action, no items to report out on from Mr. City Attorney, Chris.
No, Mr. Mayor, no reportable actions.
All right, thank you. And with that, we'll go on with council members and announcements. And Red, do you have announcements you want to start off with?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to recognize one of our special Morro Bay citizens, Ken Vesterfeldt, for the things that he does to make our city a better place to live. Ken is instrumental in organizing our annual car show that brings hundreds of vintage cars and thousands of visitors to Morro Bay every May. Ken is also a special friend of the police and fire departments. He's a volunteer patrol officer who is out there several times a week helping to keep our streets safe. And he's also on the Friends of the Fire Department that, to help raise money to buy special equipment for our firefighters. And he was part of the original team that raised thousands of dollars to help build our new fire station. So I want to recognize and thank Ken for the many things he does to make this a special place to live. Morro Bay active adults are hosting an open house at the community center this Friday, but I'm not going to talk about that because Mr. Kirk Carmichael is here tonight and he's going to talk about it. It's up there on the screen. The Morro Bay Eagles are hosting a Father's Day breakfast this Sunday, which is Father's Day, from 11 to 1:00, and there is no charge to fathers. So if you're a father, come on out and have an Eagles breakfast. I will do office hours this coming Saturday at Sun 'n' Buns from 9:00 to 10:00.
All right, Matt, John?
Good evening. Just a reminder to the viewing audience and those of you that are here, Councilmember McPherson and I will be doing a special meeting at the community center on the 20th of this month, June 20th, at 6:00 p.m. till 8:00 p.m. It's to take public input with regard to the vacation rental ordinance. It's not a formal city council meeting. It's just two members that have been appointed as a subcommittee that want to hear from the public that have interest in vacation rentals. And so if you do have that interest, it's a time to come out, share your concerns, your beliefs about what we should be looking at in the development of an ordinance, and we'll give you ample time to express your views. So invite you then.
Time and location?
Yes, once again, community center, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., June 20th. I think it's a Wednesday night, if I'm not incorrect.
All right, thanks. Marles?
Yes, well, I welcome everybody. The mayor and I are the committee on the wastewater treatment facility, and so I just wanted you all to know that things are moving very rapidly over this month, and I want to alert you to several meetings that are coming up that you may be interested in. First of all, tomorrow evening, starting at 5:00, there will be a special city council meeting, and we're going to get an update on various aspects of the WRF project. And so that will be an opportunity for you to hear the latest and participate and give your comments. There will be a public workshop on June 23rd. It will be another opportunity. It'll be an informational workshop, and it will be held here at 1:30 to 4:30, and it will be a somewhat different format. It will not be a city council meeting. It will be a public workshop where there will be information stations and an opportunity to, again, express your views, and there will be some options because we will have more information about the rates at that point. There will also be a meeting on June 25th. There will be a joint meeting with the Citizens Committee that is overseeing the WRF project, as well as the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee and the P-WAB, and they are going to be looking at rates, and that will be June 25th. And I'm going to have to ask staff to tell me when. I'm sure it's here, but...
Yeah, it's 3:00 here.
3:00.
And then the workshop is June 23rd, 1:30 p.m. at the community center.
At the community center. Oh, thank you for correcting me. I appreciate that. Anyway, things are happening rapidly, and we just want to get that information out to all of the citizens who are interested and want to participate. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to give a shout out to Delmar Elementary School. Their last day of school, I think it was Monday, wasn't it, John? And they had the honor of being recognized as a distinguished school. There's a distinguished school award for the state of California, and they applied for that. They were one of two schools in the county, San Luis Obispo County, and quite a distinguished honor. Hopefully, they bring back a proclamation maybe at the start of school with Principal Gould's help. But it was just a great celebration, great school. Just wanted to give a shout out to Principal Gould and her staff and all the students there and families because it's well-deserved. And speaking of school, also attended the Morro Bay High School graduation and wanted to give a shout out to all the high school graduates and their families, the staff there, Dr. Pruitt, the principal, and the school superintendent, Eric Prater, who gave a really moving commencement speech, and of course, the school board. It was pretty cool to watch so many of the students and to just recognize that all the high school students that are moving on after graduation and just have to note that if you didn't know, 90% of the Morro Bay High School graduates will be going on to higher education. So it's a pretty good statistic. So just want to just give a big recognition for the high school graduations and the parents that worked so hard working through that. And I think Mr. Andersby was one of our own that was there and had a daughter, I believe, that was graduating that day. So he's one that's taking on the obligation of a daughter moving on to college. So congratulations, Eric. And with that, I just did, it was great. Marles, thanks for bringing up the announcement on the special meetings. And there was a mailer that went out, so hopefully, everybody got the mailer, and it does announce that and would welcome any feedback from the community members on the mailer that was sent. And it does identify the special meeting for tomorrow, June 13th, and the workshop on June 23rd, as previously announced. But would appreciate some feedback on that. And with that, unless there's any other announcements?
Recreation Supervisor Kirk Carmichael had an announcement to make.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Nice to see you guys. Kirk Carmichael, Recreation Services Manager. Just have something up on the screen there to alert council and staff, as well as those out in TV land. It's our 55-plus open house coming up June 15th. That's this Friday, 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock, showcasing what we do out here with our senior population. This is a joint effort with the city, along with Morro Bay Senior Citizens Incorporated, to provide this activity. So showcasing what they do in the building, as well as outside of the building with bocce ball, pickleball, et cetera. So we're going to have some great music by The Crisp Tones and some food and drinks. So come on out and check it out if you're 55 and plus or older. Our next activity, and it's a busy summer for us, along with launching into swim lessons at our new pool, we are preparing for our 4th of July activity, so that's the Family Fun Day at Thailand's Park. So 4th of July, come on out. The activities citywide start at 10:00 with a skateboard race, and that's provided and hosted by the Morro Bay Skate Museum. So we'll start off at the bridge at north end of Embarcadero, or excuse me, west entrance to Morro Bay High School, start the skateboarding race, and then push on down to the Morro Bay Maritime Museum. Pretty fun activity, happens really quick. So following that, we'll see 11:00 activity start at Thailand's Park with a couple of good bands. We've got a magician as well, and one of our own council members will be up there reading the preamble to the Declaration, dressed up for us. It should be, it's a fun activity, a lot of fun. 12:00 noon starts the bike parade, and that one starts at the bridge over the creek there at the northern end of Embarcadero, hopefully headed out by our city council member again, as well as some of our safety staff, fire chief possibly, or fire marshal. But anyway, bike parade, a lot of fun. We get a couple hundred bikes that are decorated, and they end up there at Thailand's Park to enjoy the rest of the day. And then we'll also have a paddle parade that day, 2:00 Coleman Beach. That is an effort provided by the paddleboard company, the Cannon Sandy Twist. So they'll be heading out that event for us, and it's pretty much decorate yourselves and your paddleboard and head on out there to Coleman Park to venture towards Thailand's Park. We did time it as such so the tides are a little bit easier for your arrival and return. So look forward to seeing everybody out there, and it wraps up at 5:00, just some time to go do whatever you do on 4th of July. And then, let's see, the following week, we've got our 49th Annual Brian Waterberry Memorial Fun Run, and that's our Rock to Pier Run, so 10K. So this year, because of the tide, it's an early start. It's a 7:15 a.m. start. And we'll get over 1,000 participants in this event. We'll also have a great rock and roll band there playing at about 9:30, 10:00, or no, excuse me, a little bit earlier, maybe about 8:30 or 9:00, depending on when the folks start coming back and returning from Cayuga. So Saturday, July 14th, 7:15 a.m. is the 49th Annual Brian Waterberry Memorial Fun Run, Rock to Pier Run, and the Rockin' Around the Pier Half Marathon. So look forward to seeing everybody out there and giving it a shot. Thank you.
Great, Kirk, thanks. Okay, with that, moving on, we did have a presentation from Slow Green Challenge, but that's, we don't, it's not being able to occur tonight. Okay, we'll have to reschedule that. And then, as we move into public comment, I do have speaker slips for that. We will open with our business spot, so for those who'd like to speak for public comment, there's speaker slips on the back if you politely fill those out for us. And for items that are later on in the agenda that you feel you might not be able to state for, go ahead and submit the public comment speaker slip during the general public comment section of the meeting which is occurring right now. And then, other than that, every item on the agenda, we have public comment. So with that, we start out with a business spot, and we're going to invite Jennifer Barrett up as our business spot, and if she could tell her a little bit about itself, come on up, Janet. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Barrett, and I'm the owner of Jennifer's Unique Boutique here in Morro Bay. And my location is at 231 Morro Bay Boulevard, and I'm open the hours, weekdays, I'm open 11 a.m. to 4 p.m., and on weekends, from 10 to 5:00. Right now, I'm closed on Mondays and Tuesdays, but that might change during the summer to Tuesdays and Wednesdays. I came to the Central Coast in 2005 and somehow made my way over to Morro Bay, and even before I moved here, I was doing business in this town since probably about 2008. And I was in various events around town, fairs, festivals, and antique malls. And then, I decided one day to open my own shop. So I've been there since 2016, July 1st. It's almost my anniversary date. I offer a large selection of vintage and new items. I really enjoy vintage items because they're very well-made and they have artistic value, and I enjoy offering that to the public. I also have educational things like crystals and rocks and stones for kids. They really enjoy that, and friendship bracelets. I have clothing. It's, when people come into my shop, they say, "Oh, you have a little of everything, something for everyone." So that's kind of my motto. And I really like the fact that Morro Bay Boulevard has a lot of really cute vintage, not just vintage, but really cute shops, and it's kind of become a destination for people that want something different. And I'm really excited to be a part of that. Let's see, what else? I liked my store, liked doing this so much that I opened another store in Cayucos recently. But I'm here to talk about my store in Morro Bay. I really love this town, and I like being part of the business world here. I came from corporate America, and I did that for many years before I moved to the Central Coast. And then I found that I had an entrepreneurial spirit, so I decided that this is what I want to do, and I'm really enjoying it. So thank you for allowing me to come and introduce my store to you.
Thanks, Janet. Appreciate that. Or excuse me, Jennifer, I said Janet, sorry. Next up, so opening up for public comment, we have Colt Essenwine. I hope I got that part correct. But Colt, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Irons, council members. I'm Colt Essenwine. I'm a new member of this community, but I do live here in Morro Bay. I came here tonight to introduce myself as the new Public Works Director for San Luis Obispo County. Before San Luis Obispo County, I came from Santa Cruz County, prior to that, Stanislaus County, and prior to that, the city of Stockton. Before that, I served in the United States military as a nuclear reactor operator on submarines. What I learned throughout my career of public service is to value integrity and teamwork, and what that means to me is doing the right thing and taking care of each other. And I carry that over into my philosophy working throughout the region, and that is to try to find ways to get to yes. I've met your staff, and I look forward to working with them to be a valued partner in this community. I thank you for your time. I don't know if you'd have any questions, probably not during public comment, but I just wanted to introduce myself.
Thanks very much for coming out, Colt.
Okay.
We'll talk about that Navy nuke stuff later. All right, thank you. With that, next up is Carolyn Brinkman. Carolyn Brinkman for public comment. And then Sharon Kimble. And this is for item C4 because you can't stay later. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. I am going to read a letter that I wrote to you. Dear City Council, tonight you will vote on a proposal to overturn a key part of the city ordinance on publishing council meeting minutes. The ordinance, as it stands, mandates that minutes be included with the agenda for the following meeting. The new wording would stipulate that minutes would be published as soon as reasonably possible. Please do not change the existing ordinance. That ordinance has been on the books for many years and for a good reason. The ordinances passed by you reflect your desire to be accountable and transparent. The city's ordinances are your commitments to us about how you will govern. The minutes are a legal document. We, as community members, need to see that document before the next meeting while council's deliberations and subsequent actions are still fresh in our minds. So much very complex business comes before the council, and much of that business is carried over to the next meeting. Please help us out. Minutes from one meeting help us focus on agenda items that come before you again at the next meeting. In addition, in some cases, community members who may need to bring an action against the city are up against a statute of limitations. For example, there are time limits to file a cure and correct demand for certain Brown Act violations. The ordinance should remain as it is. Please find a way to support staff so that the city clerk has time to prepare timely meeting minutes. It's about good governance. Thank you for listening, and God bless the city clerk who works so hard and with such grace for all of us.
Thanks, Carolyn. Next is Deb Humphries. Excuse me. Sharon?
Deb would like me to go first.
So this is for A7 on consent. Is it, did you want to?
Yes.
Okay, you're going to speak to that?
Because we can't stay.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, Sharon, welcome. Come on up.
So I'd like to say good evening to Mayor Irons, the city council, and staff and the public in attendance. I'm Sharon Kimble, First Vice President and Director of Civil Discourse for the League of Women Voters of San Luis Obispo County, speaking as Mayor Irons said to A7, the Slow Regional Code of Civility. We support Mayor Jamie Irons' recommendation for the Morro Bay City Council to review and adopt the Slow Regional Code of Civility. In 2015, the Morro Bay City Council adopted a resolution to follow the best practices of civility and civil discourse in all their meetings. What a great compliment to this resolution. We, the League, and my staff of civil discourse action people, have seen firsthand the positive effects when the best practices of civility and civil discourse are put into practice by elected officials, their staff, and the public in San Luis Obispo County. We now offer free workshops and training to elected officials and staff on how to build the very skills outlined in the Slow Regional Civility Code. There is no better county-wide initiative to make democracy work better than a civility initiative that supports the First Amendment and the very foundation of our democracy. When elected officials, their staff, and the public choose to model, lead, and practice civility and civil discourse, we find that everyone feels safe to express their beliefs and passions. Conversations and interaction expands. The free flow of ideas grows, creativity increases, and we see better outcomes in public policy because everyone feels respected, included, and heard, which is at the heart of both the First Amendment and our amazing democracy. So we, the League of Women Voters of San Luis Obispo County, say a resounding yes to the adoption of item A7. Together, let's create the best democracy right here in Morro Bay. Morro Bay has such a lovely landscape and so many interesting, unique businesses, nice neighborhoods, special events, and lovely walkways. Let's build on Morro Bay's strengths by finding options and solutions to the challenges that will make Morro Bay even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next up is Deb Humphries. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak about civil discourse. In following up with Sharon's comments, we think about civil discourse often as a concept and a pledge that may be in a drawer somewhere or on the wall in a frame. But I want to offer you and your community, the League of Women Voters. I'm with the League of Women Voters. I'm a board member, live in Avila Beach, and we have taken civil discourse on the road. We have been able to transform the concepts into action and to help folks embrace the opportunity to influence change. Civil discourse really starts with ourselves, and the more that we understand ourselves, we can manage ourselves and therefore understand and influence others. So we're here to offer tools. Our board has, our League of Women Voters has resources available. Myself, Sharon, and our team are trained and have a background in coaching, in organization development, in team building, in helping to bring civil discourse to life, either through individual consultation. We work with teams and groups. We've worked with boards. We've worked with the different councils. So we're here as resources for you. We just wanted to let you know that we're more than just a pledge, that we can help offer resources. So please, let us know what we can do. One example of what we're doing right now is with the San Luis Obispo City Council. We have what we call a concierge service. We don't park cars, but we have a table right in the front of the entryway there where we offer newcomers tips on how to speak, how to get started with their relationship with these meetings. We're there as a sounding board. People who are experienced sometimes want to run their ideas by us before they go in, and then because they only have two or three minutes, they want to come out and talk some more. So we're there to be a sounding board. So the concierge service is an information service. We're glad to help you if you would like to get that started or train people in your own neighborhood here who would be interested in manning the table for the concierge service. So those are examples of some ways that we bring civil discourse to life. We also keep reinforcing the concepts in our own pledge so that people are reminded that it's more than just the words. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ren Strong. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and fellow representatives, and the constituents that are here. My name is Ren Strong. Some of you might know that I speak very loudly and clearly, showing up to the mayor of San Luis Obispo a few different times, the Air Pollution Control District, the California Coastal Commission Board meeting that took place in March, talking about climate geoengineering, chemtrails, cloud seeding. As a march, they said cloud seeding for Lopez Lake. They're going to start doing that and pushing their agenda. So I'm also a water protector. I'm in air, food, life, you know. My uncle, unfortunately, he was the chief of police here in California a few different times, and he was the head of the whole state of California during Arnold Schwarzenegger, General Peter Pace, five-star general. Nobody speaks about him. So I'm speaking as hoping that my uncle, Steve Staveley, would actually be speaking on these things that are harmful for we, the people, and the planet. So regarding the 5G towers, the chemtrails spraying over our head, you can call it whatever you want, aerosol injection dispersment, solar radiation management. If you look up zero geoengineering, Z-E-R-O, geoengineering.com, you'll get all the information you need. Zero, Z-E-R-O, 5G.com, you'll get good information. There's Bye Bye Blue Sky. There's plenty of sites. There's a lot of information out there. So Frankenstein's the movie, if you want, like Frankenstein, but Frank and Sky's the movie. There was a summit in Tucson. Again, this is about poisoning our air. This is about poisoning us. And if you know about Agenda 21, Agenda 2030, this is about globalists. I know you guys know about some of this information. And if you don't, as Bruce Gibson has spoken about, that he says, "Oh, you mean condensation trails?" No, chemical trails. And if we didn't think that Vietnam, that we were, that our troops were sprayed and that we're not being poisoned with glyphosate, round-up being sold in the Morro Bay in different hardware stores, and GMO food keeps coming in, we need to grow food here locally, help heal the land, help heal we, the people. And we need to say, "I do not consent to being poisoned in our air, water. Get the fluoride out of the water. If you don't have it here in Morro Bay, I'm grateful for that." I'm out of Cayucos. The name of our company is Soil Harmonics. My business partner, Amanda Smith, has an environmental lab here in San Luis Obispo. And we are permaculturists, regenerative land restoration, and again, the water bills should not be going up either. This is about getting dirt's dead, soil's alive, understanding that wasn't in our indoctrinated school system. So I bless all you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be well.
Bob Keller. And then David Nelson.
Mayor, councilmen, staff, my name is Bob Keller. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. Surf's up, time to go surfing. Project Surf Camp 2018 is beginning with a kickoff barbecue, and it's happening, there's a flyer up there. There's a flyer up there, and it starts, it's our kickoff, June 29th, 12 to 4:00 p.m. All the food's free. We have barbecue. We welcome everybody in Morro Bay at 10:00. We have a great time. Big crowd. And anyway, it's for our special needs kids that we support. And the camp runs actually after the kickoff banquet. The camp starts July 6th and goes on to August the 4th. All are welcome, volunteers, supporters, and we would love to have you come. And also, we're going to have a lot of good prizes at the event. Paddleboards, TVs, lots of restaurants supply their gift certificates, and you get your money's worth, I'll tell you. And also, we're going to have a special wine bottle that we have every year. It's endorsed by a Super Bowl-winning coach, a Rose Bowl-winning coach, and the wine is excellent. It's one of the excellent wines you can get in California because of Napa Valley. Anyway, there's also going to be a fundraiser at Sirens this Friday, and it's going to be Back Bay Betty. It's going to surprise the entertainment and the band, and it's going to be at the Siren. It's a fundraiser also for Project Surf Camps, starts at 7:00 p.m. Friday. And for those of you who don't know where San Luis Obispo Sports Facility is, it's right on Con City Hall, the library. So I don't think you can get lost finding it. Anyway, I think that's about, oh, conclusion. I've been working on this project for a while. Matt got me involved, and now he's got me really busy. So anyway, come on out, do what you can, because it will make your day, and you'll come away with a better, as a better person. I guarantee it. It made my life fruitful. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next up, David Nelson, and then Marla Jo Sidowski.
Hi, David Nelson, assistant of Morro Bay. I like that Discord thing. That's why I'm here. I'm looking at you guys, and I'm asking why all this information that's coming out is partial? And, you know, I've read letters, and this sewer plant is driving me crazy. It's like, I know, and I know that there's people up there that know that there are module sewer plants that we can buy, bring in here. We can even contract out to build the footings for it, and the foundations. I want to know how you can look us in the face and tell us that our sewer's going to cost $167 million or $150 million. The facts keep changing here. It's really sad. You have a workshop tomorrow night, which I'm going to be there, and I sure hope that our questions from the last workshop are answered, not just blown off. Mine being, and mine still is, I contend that there are sewer plants that are built out there that we can deliver to Morro Bay a lot cheaper. I look at Los Osos, $63 million for theirs. Why is ours costing more? Now, you know, and there's contention out there that there's citizens groups that are spreading rumors that, you know, if we don't go for this, or, you know, that the funds that we're spending, I'm sorry, I'm losing my thought on that because I wasn't going there. My main thought is that we know that there's other sewer plants out there as citizens of Morro Bay. I've been here more than once, you know, asking you to go in this direction, and it's just on-depth ears. We're looking at a 218 vote, and we don't really know what's on it. And on the protest, I would hope that you would put, and I'm rambling here because we have a time limit, but on the protest where it says that you're protesting the water schedule or the sewer schedule, have the dollars after that, you know? Tell the people what this is going to cost, because I know that there's ideas up there that we got to go in this direction, but I don't believe that. I mean, I see other alternatives out there. I've actually had people say, well, why don't you give this to them? Well, you've spent $9 million, and you've had so-called managers at $380,000 apiece, and we have a new manager now, and they haven't come up with any new technology. When I talk about alternatives, I get the line of 17 different sites we look at. Nobody's talking about sites. And I think, you know, I've asked for the technology information to be handled by the city, and they don't do it. And I know my time's up. Sorry for rambling, but this is driving me crazy. Because you're just not doing a good job, period.
Thank you.
$9 million, gone.
Thanks, David. Marla Jo Sidowski.
Okay, I'd like to, I can't stay tonight, so I'd like to speak about C4 and the introduction of first reading of ordinance and the municipal code relating to council meeting minutes and terms of the citizen oversight committee respectively. I'm going to speak to the ordinance on the city minutes. I would ask you to not change your ordinance. The ordinance is there for a very good reason, and as Ms. Brinkman so elegantly put it already today, I stand behind what she had to say to you. These are critical pieces of city business that the public deserves to have in a timely fashion. Now, I understand that for the purposes of this sitting current council, that we are having a backlog in our minutes being produced and that you're over the 10-day limit or the time limit that you have to have them produced before the next meeting. That's not acceptable. It's been happening more and more frequently, and it puts citizens at a disadvantage for following the city business. What it appears to me is that you are just poised tonight to consider changing rules and bylaws because your council has made it too difficult for city staff to keep up with the minutes of all the meetings that you have. I would suggest that you work within the budget that you have and appreciate your staff. I imagine they've been overburdened, and nobody likes to not be able to do the work that's your basic work at your job. So if you're having to do other things that take you away from getting out your most basic job, it's not a good feeling for an employee. I think that the money that we spend on our attorneys, you're looking to give increases to the attorneys, the other monies that we spend on consultants and what have you, I think that you're overlooking your responsibility to make sure that the city staff has enough available staff to do the basic duties that are needed to conduct an orderly business for the people.
Thanks, Marla Jo. And that concludes all the speaker slips that I have for public comment. Okay, all right. With that, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Steve, you got public comment?
Yes.
No? I'll reopen public comment. Is there anybody else for public comment, then? None? Okay, thanks, Steve.
I apologize. I got here late. I just wanted to concur with the previous comments relative to the importance of having minutes from previous meetings available. I realize that the staff has been overworked, and I appreciate all the time that's involved. And I also just think it's important that if we are going to encourage citizens to get involved, that that material be readily available. One other, last thing, I just wanted to encourage that when the city has any type of presentation relative to the water project, that there be a table that might allow an alternative available so that people have an opportunity to get their point of view. I'm very appreciative of what the League of...
Women Voters.
Thank you very much. I said earlier about our democratic process and how it's important to get people involved in a civil manner. And I know that when we had a meeting at the library, Scott Collins encouraged suggestions, as did the moderator, in terms of what would be helpful and beneficial to the community in terms of getting information out. And so I would encourage that in any case, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Steve. Steve Stevens. Yeah, all right. And with that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And I don't think there are anything that necessarily needed to be responded to at this point. So with that, is there anything else? None? Okay. With that, we'll move on to, thanks, everybody. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And we have nine items on the consent. I wanted to pull item A7 and A9, and then I'll open up for public comment. Is there anybody?
A9 also.
So A what?
Nine.
A9.
And A9.
Okay, so we have A9 and A7. Any others? No others for consent? Okay, all right. So all of our public comments, so first one, Erica Crawford for consent, public comment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council and City Staff. My name's Erica Crawford. I'm the CEO of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight to advocate for the Slow Regional Code of Civility, which is item A7 on your agenda. Why is the chamber paying attention to this? In short, the answer is regional collaboration and cooperation. It's something that the chambers in San Luis Obispo and Northern Santa Barbara Counties do regularly. We have a group. It's called Slow Checks. We meet almost monthly to talk about some regional pressures on our economy that we share and opportunities. And I know it's also something that our mayors and city managers also do regularly in the county. This code, I think, takes the spirit of collaboration and applies it to culture, which is the culture of governing and being governed. The chambers of San Luis Obispo County see a real need for cooperative agreement amongst communities, cooperative agreement that is regardless of party affiliation, ideological differences, or constituent needs, because the business community has observed some deterioration of civil conversation and polite constructive discourse across the county. And we do see it some within our local communities also. We feel that if left unaddressed, this deterioration of civility could really hinder our shared goals in creating better, more harmonious, and ultimately more prosperous communities. So the regional code before you tonight strengthens the integrity of a healthy representative democracy, inspires potential leaders in the community to run for office or to serve as a volunteer, perhaps on an advisory body in government, and it encourages citizens to lend their voice on pressing community issues. It most certainly sets a good example for future leaders and visionaries like our children. So the county chambers support this regional code of civility because we recognize that the promise of the code made by elected officials to the public to conduct themselves in a way that allows for the widest range of opinions on ideas and policies is going to be the strongest path forward, allowing for the highest degree of participation in the process of being governed and for businesses in the process of being regulated. This code embraced fully will create a culture that encourages more people to step forward with their ideas and opinions, and will motivate more people, I think, to serve. These are vital steps if we're to effectively tackle the challenges and opportunities facing our communities collectively as a region, and we are happy to see the Morro Bay Council considering adoption of the code tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Marla Jo Sidowski.
I'd like to ask you to pull the minutes from, I mean, pull the item A4, the minutes for your May 23 council special closed session meeting. I have two points that I would like to have clarified, and perhaps at least one of them changed. First of all, I'd ask that you pull the minutes from 523 special closed session meeting to discuss whether or not it is correct that no reportable action occurred while you were convened in the closed session meeting. At the close of the 523 meeting, the city attorney, Mr. Pinoni, announced that no reportable action was taken in the closed session. Can the city explain for the public how Mayor Jamie Irons received authority to draft and mail a response letter dated 5/24/18, the day following the closed session conference, if no reportable action was taken? How does the Morro Bay City Council reach a consensus on legal considerations that allow the mayor to draft and mail a response letter on behalf of the Morro Bay City Council to the complaining party without taking a vote on the course of action outlined in the official response letter? Also, I would like to, oh, also on those minutes, I was at the 523 meeting, and there were six people from the public who arrived to make public comment. Five of those people made public comment. The minutes reflect, all they reflect is that person so-and-so supported so-and-so. Okay? There was a lot more said in that meeting. One of the people actually submitted two documents to the city council with her own Brown Act violation complaints that she had, not cease and desist letters, but complaints. The point was that it's getting frequent that community members are complaining to you about your behavior in regards to the Brown Act. Another gentleman that was there, I recall very clearly because he said he wasn't going to speak, but he decided to speak, and he said that he wanted to support the other Brown Act violation that was on the record on the conference that day from Linda Steggi. And he commented that he had the same concerns as Ms. Steggi.
Thanks, Marla Jo. Those are the only speaker slips that I have for consent. And with that, I'll close consent and bring it back to council. Any items to pull?
I would pull A4.
A4, okay. We have A4, A9, and A7. I'll take a motion to approve all items on consent with the exception of items A4, A7, and A9.
So move.
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Heding.
Second.
Second by Ms. McPherson, Councilmember McPherson, pardon me. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. First up, item A4. Chris, I was wondering if you could respond to the explanation of reporting out reportable actions and as per the Brown Act, as was spoken to, add public comment.
Sheriff, Mr. Mayor. So my understanding is that there was concern that an item on closed session was not reported out. Now, when an item goes into closed session, there are certain statutory requirements that must be met for it to be held in closed session. And then for those items to report out, the government code has a list of very specific items that must be reported out. Otherwise, you don't. In fact, government code, it's... In fact, government code, it's specifically, it's 54957.1. And in there, it lists a number of items that need to be reported out. Sending that letter that was referenced in public comment and deciding to send that letter is not one of the itemized lists that the law requires to be reported out. In summary, the five items that must be reported out are finalization of real property negotiations, authorizing the defense or initiation of litigation or an appeal, finalizing a litigation settlement, disposing of a joint powers claim, or employment status for city employees, basically hiring, firing, or discipline. If a closed session subject does not concern any of those five items, then it does not legally need to be reported out.
Is it legally required to post the response letter that was written on the agenda or on consent as it was?
No, it's not legally required.
Okay. So that was over and that was above and beyond?
Yes. The letter would be a public record, but there's no requirement that it be posted on an agenda.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council?
Yeah, I would just ask from the perspective of reporting out public comment, not only with regard to this incident but others, I note that the reporting out does not include every word that was stated, but it appears to be more or less a summary either of support of either something that was presented during that session. What legal requirements are there for the content of minutes and how specific they have to be with regard to the minutes that we do maintain?
In reference to the minutes for-- that are contained in item A4 on this agenda, minutes just need to be a summary that accurately reflects what occurred at the meeting. They don't need to be a transcription. And whether or not a summary of what a speaker says is thoroughly detailed or whether it's a one line like it is here, both are legally sufficient.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments? None? Okay. Item A4, I take a motion to approve item A4.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further comments? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. Moving on to item A9 first. Did you have something on A9? Okay, go ahead, John. So we have a couple on A9, so then John, Marla, is anybody else on A9? Okay. Go ahead, John.
I had A6 out, so I was getting to A9.
Thanks.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. I pulled A9 specifically because of the fact that unfortunately, we haven't had the opportunity to vet this through the Citizens Finance Committee. And I do understand that we're extremely busy, and it's difficult to get items agendized and meetings set. But I just wanted to, from my perspective, raise the importance of having that vetted through a committee that has been charged with the review and then recommendations to the council for action on items contained in the report. And so, again, I do understand how busy we are and how much we have going on, and it's difficult at times to meet timelines. But I do think it important for something like a third quarter budget status report that it go through the proper channels prior to getting to the council. And so I would just request in the future that we honor that and make sure that the appropriate committee has the opportunity to review the information in detail. So thanks.
Marla?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about this. I did have the opportunity to meet with Ms. Galloway today, and so I got many of my questions answered. But I think there are just two that I think the public itself might be interested in, so I would like to ask them. The first one is that if you look at the report itself, which we did, it shows the maintenance budget at the third quarter is essentially 99% spent, which was of concern to me to know that we have enough money left to continue to maintain our city the way we expect. So if you could just respond to why that is and the anomaly there. Thank you.
Sure. So you're-- just for everybody's reference, on page 18 of the attachment, page 70 of this whole packet, the consolidated maintenance section shows 99% expended as of March 31st. The way the budget was developed last-- for 1718, staffing was allocated a bit differently than how it's actually being charged. So we looked at Public Works as a whole, so Public Works, Consolidated Maintenance, Vehicles, Streets, Street Lighting, and Curbside Recycling are all components of the Public Works Department. And as a whole, the Public Works Department is on target with their budget.
So there will be enough money to continue to maintain our facilities?
That's correct.
Okay. And the second question, there was a transfer of $244,254 from the sewer fund to the water fund, and I'm just wondering if you can tell us the reason for that transfer and also what was included in it?
Sure. So this was an item that was brought up by one of our community members as we continue the discussion on charges related to the wharf that should be funded through the Water Accumulation Fund versus the Sewer Accumulation Fund. He provided a list of several invoices and amounts that he felt were related to water and should have been funded through the Water Accumulation Fund. There were prior year expenditures, all related to groundwater studies and groundwater modeling. So we've essentially put this adjustment in to reimburse the sewer fund from the water fund to pay for those groundwater-related pieces of the project.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up, the contract with Michael Nunley and Associates to develop the water reclamation plan, is that-- was that also part of that that was transferred?
That was not part of the $244,000. That's in the budget adjustment. Did get a chance to discuss that with our Public Works Director and Utilities Manager, so he maybe will offer more. But that water reclamation study was about $150,000, of which we're going to get reimbursed $75,000. So the total cost to the city would be $75,000. You know, again, it comes back to that question of where do we draw the line between water and sewer? And it's at the-- at this point, we're saying it's at the tertiary level. We can go back and do that adjustment. We haven't received the reimbursement yet, so I think we should wait till we get the reimbursement, and then if we want to do that, reimburse the sewer fund from water for $75,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Jen, thanks for meeting me earlier on this particular item. I just wanted to review one of the comments that I made specifically. It was the allocation of funds for the Delmar bathroom remodel. And just per the conversation we had earlier, I just want to make sure with, you know, council conversation, that we could actually use park impact fees or park-in-lu fees to cover that. And just maybe you can comment on that and help us with that.
Sure. So it would-- I would suggest we use the general government impact fees, of which there's a subcomponent for parks. There's a balance of about $23,000 left in there. I think the total, if you add up for Delmar, is just about $25,000. That balance doesn't include what we've received this year to date. So I expect we'd be able to cover all of that, and we would just do a journal entry to transfer the expenses to the 900 account, which is the government impact account.
Okay. So thank you for that. So the park impact fees or the impact fees under the percentages allocated for parks would be an appropriate draw instead of the facility maintenance fund?
Yes.
Okay. That would be my request with council consensus. And yeah, we've got consensus on that. And the other comments, are we supportive comments? I just wanted to-- Councilmember Heading, I just wanted to revisit your comment about the review of this particular policy. And great to bring up, but in reviewing our advisory board handbook and looking at what they're tasked to review, this isn't necessarily one of them. So if we're going to task our advisory boards, Citizens Finance Committee Advisory Board to do all these analyses on any financial reports as it reads in our handbook, then that should be as directed by city council. And so I think we should have that conversation. And I'm not being targeted or anything other than, you know, I think it was understandable that it came to us the way it did. I don't know if there's some members of the CFAC that feel as though it should have gone through them or not as the liaison, but I just want to reiterate, you know, in our policies handbook, it's pretty clear on that. And I would say it's adequate for the third quarter to come to us in that manner. Not every financial report, unless directed by council, we would need to direct through the finance committee. And I just wanted to bring that up as a course of clarity from our advisory handbook.
And thank you for that. I appreciate that. My response to that is that we have established, even though not codified, precedent of doing it. And there has been a great growth in the depth of involvement and, I think, leadership at the level of the CFAC. Thusly, my comments with regard to them being able to vet it and providing good input to us from an advisory standpoint as they see fit. And so certainly, I would be willing to look at policy changes for responsibilities in the future, and I might bring that up as a future agenda item.
Okay.
And thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Thanks.
If I might just make one more comment in response to that. I served on the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and so I know how diligent staff was in trying to bring us everything that was financially related ahead of time. And I know that oftentimes, it really was a timing issue, and the council needed to get it, and they're just-- the meeting dates didn't work. And I respect that and think that we need to be cognizant of that fact as well.
Okay. All right. Okay, great. So that concludes item A9. So we could take a motion to approve item A9 as amended?
So moved.
Oh.
I was going to make the motion. I move that we approve A9 as amended.
Second. Motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Heading. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. Item A7, I was just going to pull that. I just-- first of all, I was grateful that the Leave Women Voters came out and spoke on this important issue, and Erica as well, and all the work that the chambers are doing. I know, I just want to be clear on this. The recommendation is to review and adopt this. I would ask and make the motion that we review and endorse this. We have adopted our own code of civility and that we endorse this at this time and not necessarily make it adopted. I've had other conversations with other mayors that have taken that course as well. It doesn't mean that we can't have that side by side with our code of civility on a regional level, and I would encourage that to come back. And for those, you know, for folks, I just wanted to go ahead and take a minute on this. So Leave Women Voters was great in bringing to the city of Morbey civil discourse. And we went ahead and adopted a civil discourse resolution as was stated, was that back in 2015, Dana? And then through the course of this last round of policies and handbook corrections, we adopted a new civil discourse resolution that actually included some of the recommendations out of this code of civility that is being handed around. And so we went ahead and did that, and that's resolution number 2718. I know we're going to update it, and we'll get a new one mounted at the wall for everyone as we come into this meeting room for our residents, because it is important that we do have the type of debate and conversations about differing opinions and that we do it in a manner that people feel comfortable coming back and doing that. And, you know, I've received different emails and conversations by constituents that haven't necessarily had good experiences out in the audience of various public meetings. And that's concerning because everybody wants to be able to speak their mind and have their opinions and not feel as though they're intimidated to do so. So part of that is for the elected officials to set that example. And as we did, we set the resolution that basically was adopted by city council, and it pledges that the council and all advisory board members do that as well. I'm just going to go ahead and read this. I'm not going to-- I know this can be long-winded, but I think it's important. And this is a code of civility that was put together regionally. So the mayors for the county of San Luis Obispo, the chair of the Board of Supervisors, the Chamber of Commerce, and other civic leaders were advocating to put a regional code of civility together. And so this was at this first step, it was just initially brought forward at the mayor's meeting, and there will be a county event on June 21st from 2:00 to 3:00 at the Slow County Library that will release this code of civility on a regional level. And hopefully, all the cities will have endorsed that at that time. So the code of civility that is being proposed, I'll go ahead and read it. Code of civility, "A healthy democracy respects the people's right to debate issues with passion. A healthy democracy not only tolerates disagreement but welcomes it in order to refine ideas, create policies that benefit the greater good. The deterioration of civility across the country and within the community poses a threat to our democracy and our civic well-being. This deterioration compromises the integrity of health representative democracy, closes the door on the depth of thought, reducing the complex problems to harmful oversimplification, deters potential leaders from running for office or serving in government, poisons the civic well, and discourages citizens from engaging on pressing community issues, casts the spotlight on poor behavior rather than shining a light on possible solutions, sets a poor example for our children. We have crafted this code of civility as a promise to each other and to the people and institutions we serve, that we will always strive to conduct our debates with, whether in person, online, or in written communication, in ways that allow for the widest range of opinions on ideas and policies, yet also respects the dignity, integrity, and rights of those with whom we might disagree. With other individual and collective commitment to this code, we welcome our elected colleagues, the press, and the public to hold us accountable. In our deliberations, we pledge to listen first. We will make an honest effort to understand views and reasoning of others by listening to understand, not listening to find fault, allowing thoughtful discussion to lead to the best possible outcomes. Respect differing-- different opinions. We will invite and consider different perspectives, allowing space for ideas to be expressed, opposed, and clarified in a constructive manner. Be courteous. We will treat all colleagues, staff members, with public and a professional and courteous manner, whether in person, online, or in written communication, especially when we disagree. Disagree constructively. We strive to advance solutions to community issues when faced with disagreement. We do more than simply share our concerns with differing positions. We work to propose a course of actual-- of mutual benefit. Debate the policy, not the person. We will focus on the issue and not personalize debate or other tactics that divert attention from the issue." That's the code of civility that's being proposed, and I just wanted to go ahead and read that and make a motion that we endorse this code of civility on a regional level. And for those who would like to attend on the 21st at 2:00 to celebrate this, they would all be invited, and that would be the motion on the table.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Matt. We have a motion by Mayor Irons, second by Councilmember Makawetsky. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I was-- the reason I had asked to pull it as well, I had the same question that you did. I'm just wondering, as you actually exposed, which was good, since we have the existing public comment notice in our agendas, will this in the future then be adopted and codified and replace this? Is this something that we're endorsing just as something that would be good to follow? Or how can we strengthen the-- Or how can we strengthen the implementation of the policies, really, my question? And I wondered if you'd thought that out, since you brought it forward from the mayor's meeting, and how that might work.
Yeah, I think, thanks for the question. So we have adopted our own code of civil discourse. I think the opportunity is, once this is completely endorsed on the regional level after the 21st, if we would like to bring this back after that, after the conclusion of the signing of, from the county's perspective, then we could certainly come back and do that, entertain that. I had talked to other mayors, and there may have been some that have adopted it, and others chose to endorse it, because they, being the city, have already adopted their own civil discourse resolution. And they felt comfortable in their own resolution and their code of civil discourse. And at that, so there have been cities that have endorsed it, some have adopted it, but recognizing that we already have one that's adopted, I just wanted to present this in the fashion that we endorse this at this time.
Great. And the reason why I bring it forward is I'm passionate about getting this codified and not just adopting it, but, or endorsing it, but adopting. And the reason is, I think, some of the things that we struggle with in the community is our passion turns into some of the statements that are protected with this, and passion can turn into attacks on individuals, something that none of us like to see, nor do we want to endorse as part of the city. And so I wanted to see some teeth put into this, and I think your explanation allows for that. If we could, I'm not sure what the process should be, but agendize it for consideration in the future for something that could be adopted. I would be for that, if that's the process we should take to do that, and so.
John, may I ask a question? Are you assuming that we would replace our existing one then with this one? Or since we already have? I mean, we could obviously do a side-by-side comparison to see which one we might prefer, or if ours already covers all of these major points, then we would not need to take that action.
Right, yeah. And I think that's a good question, and I don't necessarily think it needs to replace what we have, but there are some essentials in here that I think are missing from our existing that this covers, and so.
And I think you bring up a good point. I think perhaps after this is, I wouldn't say it's necessarily adopted, but I mean, you know, following the 21st, you know, we can revisit that and perhaps adopt the county code of conduct, if you will. And certainly, you know, the challenge could, that could be that, you know, whether it's on an annual basis or at the will of the council, you know, to recognize the code of civil discourse that we have currently adopted as a city, and understand that we have a code of civility that we've adopted regionally. And it basically has the signatures of all seven cities in that manner, and we could bring it back when it has those signatures.
That sounds good. I know in the county committees that I sit on, all three of them use this as their code of civility that has been adopted, and it works extremely well. So, good.
So we have a motion to, a motion and a second to endorse the current code of civility countywide. And with that, I would say all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Yep. All right, that concludes item A7 and the consent agenda. We can move on to public hearings, and then following the public hearings, we could take a short recess. First public hearing item up is item B1. This is adoption of resolution number 3618, continuing the program and levying the assessment for the 2018-19 fiscal year for the Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District.
This is continuing the program and levying the assessment for 2018-19 fiscal year for the Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District. The assessment is a critical protected revenue stream that allows the city to market Morro Bay to tourists. The use of funds is designed to enhance tourism to the community, which should increase overall transient occupancy tax, TOT. For 2019, we're projecting TOT to be at $3,500,000. Yearly, we have 1,368 direct Morro Bay jobs that are related to tourism. That would be through accommodation, food, art, entertainment, recreation, and retail. Overall, we have 1,800 total jobs in Morro Bay that are either direct or indirect related to tourism. Since the inception of the Morro Bay T-Bid in 2009, TOT and occupancy have steadily grown. Hotel and motel annual receipts have increased from $16 million in fiscal '08-'09 to over $26 million in fiscal '16-'17. Additionally, the TOT annual collections has grown by approximately 65%, and occupancy rate has increased from under 50% to over 62%. The Morro Bay Tourism Department started as an internal city department in June 2016. We're just coming up at the end of two years. Tourism structured for our surrounding San Luis Obispo County cities. They are all internal departments with the exception of Paso Robles. They just moved over to a 501(c) recently. Positive growth factors within the purview of T-Bid, effectively marketing Morro Bay as a tourism destination, working closely with stakeholders in the lodging industry here locally, and creating new opportunities and events for our hotels to benefit from. Factors beyond our control, of course, current Highway 1 situation and other natural disasters that have happened in the last few years, economic conditions at a federal level that have impacted international travel significantly this last year and a half, and also improvements that have made, are made to hotel stocks by the owners, also improves the numbers that we do not affect. Strategic efforts for this upcoming year, we have some really great things happening that are really critical. One is implementation of our strategic plan, which we're currently working on, as well as the agency of record contract, the creation of a campaign to launch before the Highway 1 reopens, implementation of the new Morro Bay website, which we're almost done with the contract on that, and also improving reporting and performance, which we will have a presentation next week to T-Bid from the agency. For the fiscal budget for '18-'19, we have an anticipated $836,135 in assessment revenue, that's at 3%, plus the $157,000 contribution from the general fund, plus $4,000 estimated for advertising revenue from our yearly guide that we do. In conclusion, we recommend that city council conduct the public hearing tonight, consider public comment, and adopt resolution 3618 to continue the Morro Bay T-Bid activities and assessment for fiscal '18-'19.
Great, Jen, thank you. I don't have any public speaker slips for this item. Is there anybody for public comment on this? None? Are there any questions from council on this item? We have gone through this, this is the final process for this. Okay. So with that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Red?
I'm okay to proceed.
Okay. Matt? Okay. Everybody's good?
Hey, I just wanted to point out that we did provide direction to staff at our prior meeting, and I want to make sure that we read that into the record. The prior direction was that we would like to have you continue your discussion of incorporating vacation rentals and RV parks into the T-Bid at some proposed assessment rate, and that you would bring back to council consideration of rescinding resolution number 03-16 specifying the city contribution to T-Bid for a future discussion of how to allocate those funds. So I just want to make sure that we have that in the record for next year, and I know we've already voted on that, but I just wanted to reiterate it.
All right, great. Thanks for that, Marlus. And with that, we'd take a motion to approve the adoption of resolution 3618, continue the program, and levying the assessments for the 2018-19 fiscal year for the Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District. That would be the motion.
Are you moving it? I'll second it.
Okay. Was there, I'm sorry.
Liaison.
All right, I'm sorry. Yeah, I second. Okay. So we have a second.
Is that what you want?
Okay, that's fine. So we have a motion and a second. Pardon me, Red. And it's a motion, Mayor Irons, second by Councilmember Davis. And with that, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Pardon me, Red. Next one up, item B2, and this is the public hearing and adoption of resolution number 3718, which amends the fiscal year 18-19 master fee schedule, adopted by resolution number 1718, adding a commercial medical cannabis operation permit application fee. And Mr. Graham? Thanks, Jen.
Cool. All right. So, thank you, Mayor Irons. So, yes, we're bringing forward the, an amendment to the adopted FY 18-19 master fee schedule to add a fee for application processing for commercial cannabis operations. Little bit of brief background, important dates, back in November 14th of 2017, the council adopted the Commercial Medical Cannabis Operations Regulatory Program through adoption of ordinance number 612. In April 10th of this year, you adopted the master fee schedule for 18-19. And another important date, July 1st of 2018, is when we'll start accepting applications for the two available commercial cannabis operation licenses. And since we don't have a fee, it's important to put a fee in place to cover our costs, because they might be relatively significant. The proposed idea is to set the fee at about $18,000, specifically at $18,000, not approximate. That's going to be a deposit-based fee. It will cover this, the staff's fully loaded hourly rates, that's our pay rates, plus benefits and overhead, and plus some time for city attorney as well. And it'll also cover costs for a third party outside vetting company. We're going to contract with HDL to do it. They've done thousands in the state of California. We thought it would be a good idea. They actually did the vetting for applications, the initial vetting for applications for the State Grover Beach, and I was able to talk to my counterpart there, Bruce Buckingham. Said he had a very good experience with them. I think our police chief back there in Greenfield, they also used HDL to do similar processes, so we have a little bit of internal experience with that company, and they seem to do a pretty good job. I had an at-length conversation with them about how they go about the process, and pretty comfortable with how that would play out. Their fee per application is $2,500, so it would be covered underneath that initial deposit. And then they're, depending on how much of a background check and how many employees they have, that fee ranges between 150 to 300, depending if it's a standard employee or a management employee. Did some research out there about what other cities were charging. It's all over the map. Ranges from a low about $10,000, and then an upper level at about, almost 30. So it was, figured 18 was kind of a sweet spot there, and then we have the ability to charge additional monies to recoup ideas, to recoup 100% of our costs associated with So again, that sort of leads into this slide, which is why the deposit, again, it allows us to be flexible. And once we get down to about the $5,000, that we draw that number down to about $5,000, we'll have to stop and evaluate where we sit in whether we think we'll need additional funds or not to continue the vetting process. I guess it would also allow folks, you know, the opportunity, if they didn't want to pay us more, they could hop out of the process, if they didn't think they were doing well. So again, in any unused funds that are submitted, we would be returning to the applicants. We're not trying to keep money from them. The final slide that I have is sort of what it would look like in the, in the master fee schedule. You have that amended section, it shows in red as, you know, as a red line change. I'm just going to read sort of the language here, so it covers the items that I talked about. It says it's $18,000 deposit. It's meant to cover staff and consultant costs associated with processing of the application. The amount is a deposit, and will be drawn down based on staff fully loaded hourly rates, plus any third-party consultant costs. The applicant is responsible for 100% of the costs associated with the processing of the application. Additional deposit fees may be requested, once deposit amount is drawn down below $5,000, and then any unused funds will be returned to the applicant. With that, I'll end my presentation. We do recommend adoption of resolution 37-18 to implement the $18,000 deposit fee, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate the staff report and the presentation. With that, I don't have any speaker slips. Is there anybody for public comment? None? We'll close public comment. Questions from council? Marlus?
I just have a couple of questions for you, Scott. Can you tell me exactly what the staff is going to do versus what HDL is going to do?
So we have a list of submittal items that are in there, that are in the ordinance, and they'll review the application for compliance with that. Then they'll also do the background checking portion of it. They offered also to, if we were going to do interviews, to sit in with that if we were interested. Those were the, sort of, because they have a lot of experience in talking with the industry, and whereas maybe city staff doesn't have that. And so they'll help us set up a ranking process for it, so we can score the applications, I think, which is important to show that we're doing it fairly. And then they will move on, maybe we get 10 applications, and five of them meet all the requirements. Those five would move on to the department head group that's vetting the application, and then they would review it, maybe conduct interviews, and then make a recommendation to our city manager, who will then choose the two. So that's kind of how it's going to work.
And have you had a lot of interest so far from people?
It's a great question. I've had, I've spoken with several of them. Some of them very interested. They operate probably five different companies that operate elsewhere in the state. Many of them have multiple locations. Another five to seven, that, maybe another four that have ancillary businesses associated with the industry, meaning they do delivery and that type of thing. And then a couple other ones that, they talked to us a little bit, didn't seem they were real serious, but you never know who you're actually talking to. Are you talking with the business operators, or someone that said, hey, when you're driving through Morro Bay, go stop and ask them about it? Little unclear on some of those. But I think we're going to get at least five solid applications for really good qualified folks, and maybe more. But I know I've been engaged with five pretty consistently over time, so I think we're going to get at least some good applicants that we can vet pretty well. And if we want, we can even go and see how their operations run, which I think is going to be important, since we haven't done this before. We can reach out to our counterparts and counterparts in those cities, talk to them, see what they, you know, what their experience is with those companies, and then, and maybe do a walkthrough of those individual businesses. Seems a reasonable process, given that we haven't done this before.
And are we on target to meet the July 1 deadline in terms of having an application?
The application's online. It's actually under Hot Topics on the front page of the city's website. Soon as I got it done, I put it up there. Got quite a bit of help from Chris Newmeyer there with fixing up the application. Thank you, Chris. So, yeah, and people have been downloading it and calling me, asking questions, and getting clarification, so they are filling the applications out. I have been letting them know that the, you know, the fee up until tonight, when you make a decision about it, was proposed at $18,000 for a deposit, and the ones that I've been talking to didn't seem to blink.
Okay. And this fee will only apply to the bricks and mortar dispensaries, correct? What are we going to do about delivery services in terms of, are they going to have to pay something?
There, we have a business license requirement that they come through, a little bit more than that, and they're supposed to be getting business licenses with us. I was talking with our finance folks recently about, you know, altering our application to reflect that. I don't know whether we've received any applications for business licenses for I don't know whether we've received any applications for business licenses for medical delivery services yet. I'm not sure about that.
Is that something we might want to consider in the future as some additional, especially, I'm not sure how we would vet them or check on them?
Our requirements for the business license is pretty straightforward. You just have to register with the city, basically. It tells you, you have to identify who you're associated with, you know, where's your, where's your place of business, and not a whole lot more than that. It really is.
Yeah. And Chris, I'm sure, would, would tell us about what the requirements were for the delivery services. They did have to have a store somewhere, correct?
They have to have a legal business in another city. And then the intent of getting the business license was to have a minimal record of who's actually delivering into the city. And at this point, it sounds like we're still waiting for folks to pull a business license.
Is there a penalty if they are delivering and they don't have a business license?
It'd be the standard penalty for not having a business license in the city.
Which is?
I don't have off the top of my head the exact amount, but I believe also they'd be subject to the penalties of the Chapter 550, the cannabis regulatory program. I mean, if we really wanted to strictly enforce it, we could use those penalties, which are a lot stricter, because that requirement's in the 550 chapter.
Okay. And so, we have a process, and we know who's on the committee, and you may very well be doing some interviews or even visits to these establishments before.
I think so.
Making a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, from the, you know, from the process. Again, we haven't done this before, so it makes sense that if we do get folks that are actually operating elsewhere, that we look into what that looks like. I mean, that's just like you would do, you know, reference checks for an applicant, applicant applying for a job. I mean, it's, you know, a little more comprehensive process, but similar.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, yeah, yeah.
I was going to ask you about quality control testing, but I won't do that. Just, Chris, when Councilmember McPherson mentioned that, it just brought to mind, are we setting up a dual standard for standard of care in terms of possibility of having a stronger vetting process for brick and mortar versus mobile? And assuring the quality of products are the same with two different tiered systems?
Both deliveries coming from outside of the city and then existing brick and mortar that soon looks like will be in the city will be subject to the same strict state standards. In regards to the city standards, we certainly have tailored, you know, more restrictions for the brick and mortars. That's true. But the requirement that deliveries have a lawful state license means that they're subject to the hundreds of pages of regulations that the state has on dispensaries.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks. Yeah, go ahead, Matt. Red?
Scott, I do have a question. Is there any sort of other precedent citywide, countywide, for any sort of deposit like this for brick and mortar cannabis shops? I mean, you, you had said that they had a wide range, but does every municipality in the county that will allow these sort of businesses have the same, some sort of deposit?
Some of them actually have fees for the different pieces of it. Business licenses are a fee for that. Some are, you have them in their land use regulations, so there's a fee for the conditional use permit process that's associated with it. So, it's, some of, some of some places it's multi-tiered, others take it on, take it on a deposit basis. It's, you know, again, it, it runs the gamut, really. I mean, so getting at the fees is kind of actually part of the problem. You have to call the jurisdictions and find out what they're doing. Some of them are nice enough to have it, because it's, is relatively recent legislation that they're implementing. They, they have, you know, like a handout that talks about it, but some don't, and so you have to kind of dig through their fees to figure out where they're at. Because I've called a couple of them, and I was like, your fee seems really low, but you said it's a deposit, but why is it only $8,000? And they're like, well, they also have to go through our conditional use permit process, and that's $18,000. I was like, oh, okay. That made a little more sense. And so, that was a little bit of, you know, some of the, you know, a couple of the calls I've made out there, just kind of trying to figure out really what they caught, what they were charging. And then HDL, when I talked with them, they were actually very helpful in, in, you know, describing about how long it takes to go through the process. You know, they said our vet, their individual vetting and going through them, I mean, they're very familiar with it, though, you know, is about 10 hours, plus or minus. So, it was, that helped me. And I asked them, I talked to them about what, how long jurisdictions are taking to go through them, and they gave me kind of a, a lot, you know, a list of timeframes that it usually takes for an application to go through a process. And I, and I said, well, where I was at, you know, at the time when I was looking at it was around the $15,000 range, because that was the information I had pulled into that point. And then they provided me some additional information, and I upped it to the 3,000, by $3,000. That was also to account at the time to have a little bit more time for the city attorney's office to be involved, so I wanted to make sure I was covering that as well, so.
I guess, and then that leads to a wonderful point. In terms of anybody watching this or listening to this, this isn't necessarily a one-time burden on this sort of industry permitting process. It seems, as you just say, any business coming into town, be it a restaurant on the Embarcadero, in terms of getting into the conditional use permitting process, they are going to be bringing on costs. So, this $18,000, it could be unnecessarily translatable, but relatable across the gamut of the various industries.
I mean, we're not taking them through our permitting process, you know, land use permitting process. We're licensing them through our, our business license component of our.
No, you mean it's just relatable? When someone would say, well, we don't, not every business has to be permissible.
It's not dissimilar. I mean, what we're implementing is a regulatory, a new regulatory program, so, and one that's, you know, we don't have much experience with, so it's going to take us a while to get through the process. The vetting process is not going to probably be very quick. And it's going to, you know, you have all your department heads, and they're the most expensive folks in the city. From city staff standpoint, that, you know, they're the most expensive folks that, you know, they'll be looking at it from a staff standpoint, so their time is expensive. And so, yeah.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Okay, Red?
Could you describe the staff efforts, like which departments and, and about how many people?
So, I mean, it'll, it'll, the idea is that it'll be coming in through my department, the Community Development Department. At the, at the planning counter, we'll be taking those applications in, packaging them up, and we're going to enter into a contract with HDL to do the initial vetting. And then when we get the ranked, you know, scores out of those, it'll go to the department head group, which is comprised of our finance director, police chief, fire chief, a little bit of help from me. And then they'll be making the recommendation, moving forward, to the city manager, and so.
Thank you. Let me say I'm again impressed at how thorough you do your homework to bring this, this information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job, Red. All right. Any other questions? So, we've had questions, comments, and deliberation. We ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that we add a commercial medical cannabis operations permit application fee to the adopted fiscal year 2018-19 master fee schedule, amending Resolution 17-18 and adopting Resolution Number 37-18, which updates the city master fee schedule for fiscal year 2018-19.
Second? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember McPherson, second by Councilmember Heading, Mayor Protem McPherson, pardon me. You know, it's easier, sometimes it's easier to just say Marlus and John, but anyway.
I answer to everything.
Yeah, all right. So, we have a motion and a second, and I think Dana got that. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. If you want to take a five-minute recess, we'll take a five-minute recess and come back for our first business item. Next item up, Item C1 is our first business item of four tonight, and this is the approval of the amendment for number, number three to the contract services agreement with Alshar and Winder LLP for City Attorney Services. And with that, we're going to turn it over to Jen. Excuse me, Scott. I'm sorry, I'm looking at Jen's name on this, this restorer staff report. Scott, if you can help us out a little bit and help me out a little bit, that'd be great.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Scott Collins, city manager. And the subject of the Item C1 is the approval of Amendment Number Three, the contract service agreement with Alshar and Winder LLP for City Attorney Services for the city of Morro Bay. And currently, the, the services provided by them are pretty extensive, providing legal, general legal support, support for labor negotiations, personnel matters, contracts, ordinances, resolutions, public records requests, et cetera, for the following funds, all of our general operations. That includes city administration, police, fire, city council, city clerk, HR, finance, on down the line, as well as three enterprise funds, harbor, water, and sewer. We are a pretty fully loaded city, so it's an extensive area of legal expertise to cover, which necessitates us having solid legal representation. The city attorney has made a request, or ANW has made a request, to increase their hourly rates for all of their billing categories by $10. Currently, the general service is at $165 per hour, and several other service items that I haven't listed out here, but in the staff report, would also be raised by $10 an hour. So, the general service would go from 165 per hour to 175 per hour. As part of that request, there are additional increases in fiscal year 2021 for $10 hourly increase for all those service categories, as well as a $10 an hour increase in fiscal year 22-23. This is a, a bit of a difficult chart to read, but this far-left end of this, these are all the city attorney and legal costs for the city, the entire, all costs, both those that were provided in-house and those that are contracted out. The left end is fiscal year 2009-10, all the way to the right side, which is the proposed budget for 1819, which will be discussed and adopted later this evening. So, for the first four years, we are hovering around, on this graph, around $300,000. The change occurred in 2013-14, which is sort of in the middle of the graph, where you start to see a, a larger red figure. The red figure is the outside legal. The orange color is the, the internal legal that was provided at the time. And they moved to the next slide, next column. It's 2014-15 is when ANW took over providing legal services. Moving to the next column, we have a significantly, significant increase in the orange category. We had a couple personnel matters that were going on that year, plus pretty intense labor negotiations with our, with our three, our four bargaining groups. And then you start to see the number come down, the last three columns, from '16-17, '17-18, '18-19, starts to hover between 400 and 500,000 dollars a year. So, that just gives you a sense of where things have gone. You know, prior to the, the new firm coming on was an internal in-house provided service. It was around $300,000, and it's now around $400,000, but that's five or six years down the road. So, obviously, there's natural cost increases that occur. So, that gives you a sense of how things look internally compared one to the other. And then another, you know, another way to look at that is that the city's paid the same hourly rate to ANW since 2000, January 1st, 2015, they've had the same rate. This request would equate to a 3% increase over time from 2018 to 2022, which is pretty much in keeping with the general cost of doing business increases across most of the city. In comparison to several surveyed city, California cities and agencies, the average general legal service rate is hovering around $229 per hour. And again, we go back to what's being requested, the general service rate would move up to $175 per hour next year, $185 per hour in 2020, and $195 in 2022. So, it would still be well below the average that we received from the following cities: La Palma, Crescent City, Aranda, Victorville, Fresno Flood Control District, Mission Viejo, San Mateo, Mosquito and Vector Control District, South San Francisco, Sacramento Public Library, and Sinetis, and Dixon, which is a good cross-section of agencies in the state of California. So, they're well below that, that average hourly rate. I also did some other analysis and looked at the cities in the city, in the county of Slow, for fiscal year 1718, the average annual legal costs, talking all legal costs, not only those that they may have in-house and those you contract out. Across those cities was $459,000. By way of comparison, our legal costs, all legal costs, including ANW and those that we, we get from outside help, is 429,000, thereabouts. That's what we're projecting for 1718. And moving into 1819, we've budgeted probably around $465,000, so we're right around that average for, for the county, just to give you a sense of comparison. So, that concludes the report. And just as a reminder, the request is to bump up the hourly increase by $10 for all the general categories, and then for next year. And then another $10 increase in 2020, and another $10 increase in 2022. Happy to answer any questions with councilman.
Okay, great, Scott. Thanks for that. So, just for source of information for the viewing audience and for those, our city attorneys sitting in, in the audience, it's not at the dais for procedural purposes, and so we are just going to, discussing his contract, and, but available in the audience should we have questions. I just wanted to elaborate that for kind of a process, procedural thing, and just explain that to our viewing audience and for councilmembers. With that, I'll open up for questions from council, and I don't have any speaker slips for this item, follow-up questions. If there's from council, if there's speaker slips or folks for public comment on this item, we'll open for public comment and then deliberate. So, questions at this point? Marlus?
I just wanted to, well, you were giving the average cost for an attorney at 244. I'm just wondering if you know what the average dollar figure is for all of the hours that they have put in for us?
Can you rephrase that question?
Well, I, I, I mean, they have a different rate for each particular type of service they provide. I'm just wondering if we have an overall, what the average dollar figure is for our attorneys?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I probably can get back into that figure, but most, most of the services they provide typically fall in that general service category.
Well, in the future, I mean, if we can get it, I, I, I'm just curious to know, because that's also another way of trying to decide where we're at.
Sure.
And I am correct that this is the kind of a contract where we could terminate at any point in time, there's no, without cause or.
Right. I mean, there's a, the general provision to provide a certain number of days at this customary.
Right. But I, I'm just, yeah. And that we could make an amendment to the contract at any time also.
Correct. Right. That's correct.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions.
John?
Thanks, Scott, for the presentation, and thanks for the good data. Appreciate the benchmarking data, very helpful to look at, not only the county, but other areas, and also look at our historic rates. Just one question for you. Do the numbers that you quoted us also include the fees for labor negotiations?
Right. Yes, the, in all, across all those categories that I provided, the, the analysis both within the county, the analysis in comparison to other cities and agencies in the state, as well as the internal analysis comparing when it was an in-house service to a contract, all those are built in. All the labor negotiations and personnel costs are part of that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Jim?
Yes, I do have, in terms of looking at the historical analysis, Scott, in terms of the special services, in terms of the wastewater plans we have going on, and looking at this contract from 2018 to 2022, understanding that the, this wastewater treatment plant will get built, I would think, in the next four or five years, with that said, would we expect those special services costs to go down?
It's, it's hard to say. I mean, there is, there is quite a lot. It depends, I guess, if we, if there are challenges to the project and a variety of different manners that there could, that certainly could raise.
It could go up.
It could go up. If things are, you know, 218 moves along, EIRs moves along, I mean, there, there are certainly components that would necessitate the attorney's participation in important discussions, particularly around acquisition and potentially permitting components, but.
So, looking at this flow chart, and then understanding this, even for this fiscal year, going.
year going forward, interested people, interested residents, they have to be aware that these could go up, especially as we have a number of these big items coming, E I R, 218, and then the, in the coming years, whatever issues we have there.
That's correct.
So, it could go up.
It could go up. We, we do our best to estimate moving forward and look at the, just like we do in all departments, look at the items that were having come before us based on the work plan and strategic goals of the council and specific goals of the department. We certainly have put money aside in the next year's budget for the work.
Okay. Do you, is there any sort of best practice that you plan to, do put into place, or plan to put into place, in terms of to control these costs and to keep them at a manageable level?
Yeah. Currently, we, we have a thorough review of the bills that come in, the invoices that are submitted, multiple review, layers of review. You know, it's my practice as city manager to make sure that we only reach out for legal assistance when we absolutely need it. And some of these things, we can do ourselves, like looking up our own ordinances and state code. Those are things we can do. But certainly, we have a great, great service at our disposal, and we should use that when we need to. So, it's really kind of those checks and balances, both on the front end and then on the back end when the bill's received, to make sure we've, we're being billed appropriately.
And then those bills do become available for public scrutiny, where and when and how?
It's through the city clerk's office, yeah.
Would they just call you up or email you, Dana? Okay. And then would that be a Freedom of Information Act request, or would the Public Records Act? So, okay, thank you. And that's all my questions.
Red?
Thank you for this, Scott. The contract is with the firm itself, is that correct?
Yes.
So, it could be with any attorney performing any of these services?
That's right.
With that firm, okay. And do we get to approve who our attorney is? For instance, if Mr. Panoni were to leave, then the firm would propose a replacement, and we would say yes or no, or bring in somebody else?
Yeah. I mean, that is a discussion that council would have with the firm, for sure.
Okay. All right. That's all my, thanks.
Okay. Thanks for those questions. I don't have any speaker slips for public comment. Is anybody who'd like to speak to this item? None? Seen no comment? I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and discussion. And Marlaus, you want to start off?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that this is actually just a request to increase the rates, and I appreciate the fact that they have not been increased since 2015. But I am uncomfortable with promising five years of increase, or three big increases, three increases over the course of five years, given our current budget situation. Plus, I'm uncomfortable with treating this, the attorney, even though it is a contract, differently than we're treating our employees. And because we know we're facing a budget crisis, I think we need to put the same kinds of constraints on increasing this contract as we do on increasing salaries. And we have been really tough in negotiating with our unions and, and conditioning any kinds of increases on the fact that the city will have the revenues to cover those increases. So, I'm fully in favor of granting a $10 per hour increase for the next two years, for sure, with the possibility of considering another increase in two years of $10 per hour, provided that the city reaches its revenue targets at that point in time. So, that's where I'm coming from at this point.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Marlaus. Appreciate that. John?
Thank you, Councilmember McPherson. I agree with your sentiments exactly. I do, for the record, want to state that the, the current firm that we have, in terms of my tenure here, has been stellar with regard to their performance. I believe a firm, as opposed to a city attorney in-house for a city this size, would not bring to us the depth of services and expertise that we have experienced, not only in the last couple of years, but will experience in the future with some very significant issues, like the W R F project facing us. I believe that legal services, I look at them as an investment that has a return on the investment. And what I'm speaking of is really cost avoidance. Recently, I've been involved in a couple of subcommittees where we have looked at some lease issues that occurred many years ago, that if they had good legal vetting, I believe, would have prevented some issues now that are of concern. And as a result of that, we are uncovering these and making some changes to our lease policies to prevent those in the future. That's just one of a number of examples that I've seen, I think, from a ground floor level. The service has been extremely responsive on the spot with regard to Mr. Panoni and Mr. Niermeyer, when he has substituted. And I've appreciated that. With regard to labor negotiations, also, there's great depth there in your organization. And I believe we've been serviced well by Colin, our attorney for labor negotiations. One of the things I look at with this is if you look back to the slide that you had graphically, that had the in-house lawyer, and you extrapolated the very beginning, and I, I thought it was 2009, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you, if you just took the C P I, and you went each year and compounded it, it's basically the C P I rate that we're at right now. And so, we're not talking about some huge increase over a period of almost 10 years, but one that has been consistent with the C P I. Second, having recently had, owning a business and being involved with a lawyer that I retain, and looking at just legal rates for my business, they're higher than this rate. And I only say that because I shopped it around, and that's the going rate that you see out there for legal services. And so, I'm, I'm very comfortable, not only from a performance standpoint, from a return on investment standpoint, but I do agree with Mayor Protem McPherson that we need to just grant the initial increase, and then look at our financial situation in the future, and consider future increases then. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Matt?
I appreciate the points that you guys have made already. And then another idea, something that makes me think of this whole process going back to not just 2009, but 2015, we've had a service that has worked for three years without an increase, in terms of the services that they provided, in terms of the performance that we have all, I think to a person, agreed with, and, and said, okay, this is doing all right. When we look at our other negotiations with our other labor groups, in terms of the increases that we've given them, this group has provided, this legal group has provided over three years, quite a service without any sort of raise. I think, I agree with Marlaus. I like your point in terms of the two-year, in terms of the other labor negotiations that we've had going on with our other labor groups. I can see a two-year, a 3%. When we do the entire linear aspect of this contract with this group going back to 2015, if we do that 3%, 3% in the next two years, going back, that would be five years. That's not a big increase in terms of C P I going forward, especially considering the performance that they've given. So, I think I could be in agreement with the points you've made. Also, we've received a number of public comments via email about this, and I do believe the due diligence that we're talking about right now, in talking about performance, talking about cost. Scott, I really appreciate the study, not just linearly, chronologically, but the other cities. I think when we're giving to our public the informations and the investigation to other like municipalities, and to other, in comparison to our other labor groups, I think that we are totally in line with doing this, and that this would not be out of the ordinary.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
I agree with Mayor Protem McPherson, Councilman Heading, and Councilman McCowetsky.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, Fred. I would agree as well. I've had my own apprehensions in this, given some of the, all the things that have been stated. And, you know, from a standpoint, having served through an in-house attorney and with a contract attorney, and I know there has been, you know, comments on legal service and cost of those, and the comparison of those. And Councilmember Heading brought up, hey, you know, if you compare the graph from when we did have an in-house city attorney, and what the C P I would look like, and that, I have, and as many of you probably have as well, you know, just as you check in with the legal service for the city, the feedback is, when, when we need the legal service, we have that. One thing, we, we did go through a period as we brought on contract services, it appeared that there was a lot of backlog, and there were things that had to be updated. And those were things that leave a city vulnerable in some respects. So, we, we went through some of the backlog, we corrected those things, and now we've gone through that. So, I think the value is there, and would agree with council, excuse me, Mayor Protem McPherson and her recommendation, and would support a motion going forward.
I will make a motion. I do want to just add that I echo my colleagues' comments about the quality of service that we have received. So, I'm very appreciative of the work they've done. So, my comments about this had nothing to do with the quality of the service. It really has to do with other issues. So, the motion is, I move that we amend the contract with El Shire and Winder to include a $10 per hour increase in each billing category, beginning July 1st, 2018, for a two-year period, ending June 30, 2020, with future consideration of additional fee increases, depending on the cities, achieving the city's revenue targets.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I think we had a second by Mr. Davis. A motion by Mayor Protem McPherson, second by Councilmember Davis. Are you clear on the motion, Dana? Are you good? Okay. All right, good. With any other further comments?
Just to thank Ms. Callaway for creating a place where we can easily identify legal costs for the public, and making it very transparent, so that public doesn't have to, and the council doesn't have to go digging for different areas where legal costs resided in the past. Not that that wasn't appropriate, it's just that moving it into a single targeted area allows it to be very transparent to the public. So, I wanted to just thank staff for that, and thank you for moving us in that direction. I appreciate that. I'll call the question.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Without further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. That concludes item C1. Moving on to item C2. Item, pardon me, item C2 is Resolution Number 4118, adopting the fiscal year 1819 operating capital budgets. Scott, are you going to start us off, or is Ms. Callaway going to start us off?
I think it's me.
All right. Ms. Callaway.
Thank you. Good evening. I have a kind of very short, brief presentation. We've discussed a budget quite extensively at this point. We've had three budget study sessions. May 8th, we did kind of a general overview. On May 9th, we went into some extensive detail on the budget. Council provided some direction on bequests and capital projects. And then on May 22nd, we reaffirmed a few of those previously provided directions, and then talked about our 10-year forecast and our PERS update. So, the proposed budget that you have before you tonight is a balanced budget. And while we're very happy to have a balanced budget presented to you, there's, you know, excess revenues over surplus of about $2,000 in the general fund, so just balanced. We do want to, you know, cautious, be cautious. And the overall theme of this budget was 5% operating reductions, no new positions unless they were cost neutral. And that kind of cautious theme is going to carry forward into the 1920 budget and years beyond, as we're really going to start to feel those PERS impacts. So, we're happier balanced this year, and we know we have challenges coming up that we plan to engage the community with, probably late summer, early fall, to start getting some direction for the 1920 budget development process. Again, with the balanced budget, $14.3 million in revenues, and $14.3 million in expenditures, when you account for the transfers in and out. The total city budget, 55.8 million in revenues and 51.2 million in expenditures. The difference there is planned use of fund balance or cash on hand. Most notably, that would be with the Wharf project and some of the accumulated funds, and the water and sewer accumulation funds. The council provided direction mostly on May 9th. We were asked to include $30,000 to fund the E D S P program and the contract with the Chamber of Commerce, so that's been included. The council provided direction on the bequests totaling $16,500 for E V C, SCORE, the Community Resource Center, and the Senior Nutrition Program. In addition, there's $5,000 allocated for discretionary beautification, and that's to accompany the adopted program that was approved, I think, at the last council meeting. We also had asked for an allocation of $10,000 out of the facilities maintenance fund, to fund those kind of things that come up throughout the year that you can't really plan for, and you don't know are going to happen. You know, if there's a heater issue that needs to get fixed in this room, for example, that could help fund that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The heater, heater issue in this room.
It's a bit chilly in here tonight.
And chairing issue?
Chilly, yeah. Then we need to...
Your seating, chairing.
Chairs, yes. That's in the C I P program, though. We do have that funded. Related to the capital projects, there's the city park playground equipment replacement. $150,000 was included out of the Park in Lew fund, $83,000 for striping for on-street parking, and that's in the Parking in Lew fund. And then 143, almost 144,000 was incorporated. We're listing this under the ADA Transition Plan. It's for the repair of existing sidewalks and curb ramps. And that's coming from the Government Impact Fee Fund out of the street, streets component of that fund. And those were new additions that were added at the May 9th meeting. There was discussion at that point on the surf street stairs. That's not incorporated into the proposed budget as you have in front of you tonight. Lastly, staff did go through, we noticed that the Water Capital Projects Fund page was not included in the project, or in the original draft budget, so that's been included. There isn't any net impact to the, the revenues or expenditures they were accounted for, but we did pull out a separate fund page for that. And we also have updated the state water contract amount. It resulted in about a 400, or $550,000 reduction in this water revenue expenditure fund. And that's because we got more recent information from C C W A on what that contract amount would be. So, it seemed appropriate to include that. That was all the direction that we received. It's all been incorporated, in addition to some of the more minor edits and modifications that we made, that were provided either during the budget study sessions, or from council members separately. Those were more the editorial comments. So, with that, we're, the directors are all here for questions. If you have any additional comments you'd like to make, the resolution does allow for some kind of minor amendments. So, if there's anything else at this point, we could incorporate it without coming back. If they're more significant, we would have to come back on June 26th for adoption.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll open it for questions. I don't have any speaker slips for this item, but we'll start out with questions. Red, you want to start out with questions?
I have no questions.
Matt?
John?
And no questions.
Marlaus?
I just had a couple of, well, first of all, just a comment, a question about home share. I noticed it was not on the bequest page here. I know it came from a different fund, but it was a bequest that we also made, correct?
And the $5,000 home share request is out of the Housing in Lew fund, so it was not part of that 16... part of that $16,000, that's why it's not listed in here.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that it was still there.
It is.
And then, my only other questions have, really to do with the resolution itself, and I'm just, not necessarily with the budget, but could you just tell me what exactly the city manager's authority to transfer appropriations within the adopted budget, what that authority is?
The city manager can, has authority to transfer if it's not increasing a budget. So, within line items, for instance, in the Finance Department, if I'm needing to allocate more money towards our financial services for audit purposes and going to take that out of my supplies budget, we wouldn't need to come to the council for that level of authority. As long as it's not increasing the expenditure amounts for departments, then he has authority to authorize.
What about across departments?
I believe, and I'd have to confirm, that he would have authority to do that. I think as a matter of transparency, we would bring that back as one of our notes in one of the quarterly updates, just to be clear on, on what we're doing with that.
Okay. And the same question, actually, with respect to contracts. What contracts and procurements have to be brought to the council for approval, and what ones can be approved at the staff level?
The purchasing policy dictates that. I believe it's $125,000 and above is, requires council authorization. The city manager can execute anything below that level.
Okay. And the final question, were any of the One Water Plan improvements that were identified included in this coming fiscal year's capital projects?
The One Water was funded as a capital project. It was approximately $354,000, both out of the water and sewer funds.
That's, that's paying for the contract, right?
That's correct. We estimated that we would expend, or expense about $260,000 out of both of those funds. So, the only piece incorporated in 2018-19 is the carryforward difference to finish out the contract, about $150,000.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all.
Okay, with that, that concludes our questions. Just one more look at the audience for public comment. None? We'll close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion. I was going to start off with a comment, and just for the sake of, at the last meeting, as I go through my notes, a lot of times I'm making sure the flow of comments go back and forth, and there was a, actually, there were some of my notes that I didn't cover. So, if you, if you wouldn't mind me entertaining you with some of this, because by and large, we've already gone through all this, and it should be very straightforward in the adoption tonight. I just did want to bring to discussion for council, going back to the EDSP program specifically, and I've talked with staff about this in particular, the EDSP in which we're discussing wayfinding, which is one of the goals that'd be on there. And it just, you know, I just wanted to bring to your attention in that, to include the branding of our city signs. So, as an example, we're talking about doing wayfinding, but many of our gateway signs, our park signs, our city facility signs, they're all different. And if we're going to, going through this program to basically brand our wayfinding, I think now's the opportunity to cohesively do it all at once. And I don't know if there'd be necessarily an adjustment in the budget to do that. I've talked with Ms. Callaway about how we might handle that, but I just wanted to get, bring that to the table for council for discussion and perhaps consensus, and then maybe Ms. Callaway could suggest a way to come to a solution on that. But those are my comments. I think it was, you know, relatively minor, but I felt it tied in well to the EDSP, in particular the wayfinding and the inconsistency with some of the city signs and how those are coming about, and it would be an opportunity to tie it all together. So, those are my comments. And with that, you know, I don't know if Ms. Callaway would want to make any comments on that, or if there are any comments from council on that suggestion for the budget? Looking for any kind of feedback from council at this point.
I would, I absolutely agree. I would want to know from Ms. Callaway what that means from a budgetary standpoint before I bought into it. So, yeah, thank you.
And I also, I think it's, I'm sorry that we didn't think of it earlier, to add into the budget, but I certainly would support that, but we would need to know what the implications are for the budget.
Yeah. So, I'll work with Scott Graham on this one, but my initial, my thoughts are that any kind of branding that you would want to do would come back to council in terms of design and concept. And at that point, we would have an idea of how much perhaps it would cost, and Scott can stop me if I'm not speaking in turn, but do a budget adjustment at that point. And we'd probably identify funding in either the Project Accumulation Fund, which has about $260,000 in it. I'm guessing it wouldn't be near that much for branding, but we could find a funding source at that point if we wanted to, if the council wanted to pursue that.
That was a great job.
Thank you.
Scott, so, you know, any comments on that, this, you know, out of the ordinary, you know, to asking too much?
So, the mayor and I spoke about it today, and we'd spoken about it one other time previous to this, a couple of weeks ago, maybe, or something like that.
Time when I thought I was supposed to bring it back, but didn't.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I mean, it dovetails into the process that we're going to be going through to do the wayfinding signs. That's going to be a branded thing to the individual commercial areas. And the EDSP and the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan talk about, you know, our entry points to the city being prominent areas that need signage like that, and so it makes sense to do it all at one time. So, we don't do what the city has done to this point and just sort of randomly put signs out there that don't, without a plan in place, to make them match all the other signage that we have. So, if we're going to do this for the wayfinding signs, it would make a lot of sense to do it for all of our signage. So, at least, maybe we're not going to implement it all at one time, but at least we have the plan and the design, so we could roll it out, and we can get some cost estimates as to what that might be. And so, over time, we can, we'd be able to replace some of the signage to make it consistent, because we are going to go, we are in the process of starting to go through that, you know, that effort right now, so.
So, cost estimates, you know, off the top of your head?
So, we, so, in this year's budget, we have $100,000 that we're going to put into the wayfinding effort. And I got rough cost estimates. The good thing is, the City of San Luis just recently did some of this, and, and I got some pretty good costing numbers out of that, so they started it about a year and a half ago, well, maybe almost two now. And so, we have enough to cover the number of signs that we probably need. So, it would probably be extra beyond that, is my guess, to do other signage. There's a couple of, I'm not sure what it would cost individually, depends on the materials and the types of signs that we come up with. But again, the idea would be to identify the design, most importantly, where those signs would go, and then, over time, we can work to replace them and get that consistency as opposed to, you know, going through all of the buildings in every place in town and replacing them at one time. It would probably be a fairly large get if we did it that way. But makes sense to do it, you know, you know, implement it methodically over time, so that's kind of what we're looking at.
Okay. So, and back to Ms. Callaway, as far as getting into adopting the budget at this point, moving ahead in that, and not derailing what was started with this one minor discussion in the big scheme of things, the suggestion, we could move ahead with this based on this conversation, direction from council, and come back at a later date for a budget amendment, you know, within reason to accomplish the design, and then the implementation could come back, you know, and maybe at a later date as well.
Yes, and the budget moving into next year also has, you know, money, $100,000 to implement ideas from the plan, right? The Development Strategic Plan. So, so depending on what the design cost is, it can be pulled from those funds as well, so we might not have to do much of anything. It might just be covered under the existing budget, depending on what the cost is.
Okay, all right. Any, any further comments from council on, on this? Red?
Did you just say that you have $100,000 this year and $100,000 next year?
It's been an ongoing, the council's put it in for the last four or so years to implement plans, to, and then moving forward, it'll be to implement the to-do items in our Economic Development Strategic Plan and our Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. And moving on to future years, it'll be to implement the go-do items out of our general plan, because there's also a section that's implementation for that. So, yeah.
So, we did that? We authorized $100,000 every year to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Hey.
Okay. All right. So, unless there's further discussion, further discussion at this point on the adopted budget, and then we can discuss kind of finalizing a motion on how we want to move forward.
I just, I just wanted to compliment the staff, because this has been a great process this year. I've been so impressed, and I think the assumptions that you started with were right on, and it was, you know, adding to the front line and a balanced budget, and the process went so smoothly, and I just want to thank you all so much, really, truthfully.
Kudos, and the same.
Can I make one clarification to my previous statements? I said $100,000. It was $100,000 in this year's budget. We, we altered it, a portion of it's going to go in, was identified out of our Parking in Loue Funds to implement some parking improvements like restriping, and so we took 50 of it to that, and then 50 of it to the other, I think is correct. I was getting the look from, from Ms. Callaway over there, and I was like, oh, that's correct, that's right. It wasn't, it is, it is $100,000, it's just $50,000 of one fund and $50,000 for another.
Okay, all right, good. Comments, John?
Just, are we in discussion?
Yeah.
I just, yeah, this, you know, this is mainly, this is for the community, and I want to, I want to also echo my thanks to staff in general, especially Ms. Callaway and her group, and Mr. Collins, and just all of the staff that worked on it, and the CFAC that helped review the budget as well.
Thanks.
Appreciate that very much.
Thanks, John.
And your award, soon-to-be award-winning budget document, which is outstanding, is going to be very helpful to us as we move through the year, to be able to have it as a reference. But what I wanted to discuss was really my concern with the community about where we're headed. And, you know, I look back in, was it April, we had our strategic planning community session, and one could argue that maybe it wasn't the best time or the best day, which is always a possibility, but we had eight people, and thank the eight of you for showing up in the community where we set the tone for the future in terms of goals for this community. And that was the template upon which the budget was built, those goals. And the sad thing is, is the lack of community involvement over what I would consider to be strategically extremely important things for this community. This is a balanced budget, and I think that's great for this year. It took a lot of work to balance the budget, but if you look at the 10-year forecast and the assumptions behind those, it's going to be a very difficult time, more difficult than it was this year to maintain balance, much less fund the maintenance of the service levels that we're enjoying right now. And just to highlight some macro issues, you know, the CalPERS issue is huge. We've talked about that a number of times, and with the way the election is probably going to go in the state, I see further dollars being pulled away from, from the local governments. And that's a real concern that I have in terms of protecting those funds. That's going to be a pressure on us. I also believe that there'll be a recession. I'm not going to say it's going to happen in a year or two, but, you know, we programmed that in somewhat into this budget, but when that hits, it's going to be crunch time for us. The Fed just announced that the interest rate policy is probably going to change because they're going to, quote, terminate economic growth. Interesting, because we are growing so well. And they do that by capping out the interest rate to slow down the economic growth, which means that the interest rate is probably going to continue to rise another, possibly of 400 basis points or 0.4%, which means that the cost of borrowing is going to be significant for this city if we don't take care of borrowing now. There are wage and salary pressures that we're faced with that will be significant in the future. I know I'm singing to the choir here. The cost of goods sold will continue to rise more rapidly than we can fund in the future. We're unable to fund significant capital improvements that you don't even see in the budget. Things that normally any business would, would call funded depreciation that we can't do, like completely fixing our roads, replacing routine equipment that needs to be replaced. Unfortunately, we have to wait till it dies to replace it and then scramble for the dollars. There's a very real possibility that SB 1 could be overturned this year in November. If that happens, that's a $300,000, $200,000 to $300,000 hit to the city for roads and road improvements. That concerns me greatly as, as a council person in this community. And I have 10 more that I could read, and I'm not going to do that. My point is, community, we need your help. We need your assistance. And we need you to come out proactively, please, to engage yourselves not only with concerns about the rate for water and sewage, which is extremely important, and I agree people should be engaged in doing, but we need engagement in terms of staffs moving forward with, I hesitate to word economic development, to use the word economic development, but I'm going to say revenue enhancement. You know, we knew, we need new revenue sources for this city, and we need to concentrate on moving those revenue enhancement opportunities forward quickly. And so, thank you for bearing with me, council. I am concerned. I'm calling the community to accountability. It's, it's our community, they're our funds, it's our future that we need to protect, and we need your proactive, positive, discoursed civily, civically correct input on the future of this city and where we're headed. So, with that, I support the budget. I will be happy to move the recommendation, but wanted to make those comments.
Thanks, John. Matt?
I too support the budget. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Scott, for the work, and all the staff. I understand that it's been quite a process, and I really appreciate that going forward, and I'm, I'm ready to move on us.
Thanks, Red.
And I agree. It was a great process. You just brought us easy questions for us to answer and went from there, so I'm ready to move on.
Okay, thanks, Red. I just want to extend my thanks as well. Jen, Scott, and all of staff and department heads have worked through this and working on their budgets to get us here, and I appreciate that. I just, one, I almost forgot I had one more question, and that had to do with the General Fund Emergency Reserve Policy. We understand that we're adopting it with the current policy, but we will be coming back, and it seems like tomorrow we'll be discussing some enterprise reserve policies on that, but we will need to come back and revisit that General Fund Emergency Reserve policy.
That's correct, and I think our, our plan is to kind of do a comprehensive review of those, hopefully around first quarter time. Tomorrow's a specific enterprise fund, but specific to water and sewer, and that's really to be able to provide to S&amp;P, and that's the company doing our bond rating, and they look favorably upon having a reserve policy in place for your enterprise funds. And it makes sense, it's a best practice to do so, so we should do it regardless of that anyways. So, we segregated out water and sewer for those purposes, but we do need to include harbor in that in the future and do a comprehensive review going forward.
Yeah, great. And just to touch on that, you know, we did adopt that General Fund Emergency Reserve Policy. It was a five-year, and, you know, we're, it's one of those that I just have to, just wanted to remind us all that that's out there, and even though we set a five-year target on that, you know, we, we do understand the circumstances that are changing, and we'll be revisiting that for the, the next five years or whatever that policy might look like. So, thanks, just wanted to cover that. And with that, I think we had a motion to approve, to adopt the budget with the amended direction on the EDSP and the branding and the signing.
Indeed.
Might I take a motion?
Oh, okay. I move that we adopt Resolution 41-18, authorizing the fiscal year 2018-19 operating and capital budgets, including the amendments approved by the City Council tonight.
I second, second that.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Did anything more specific to the way signing or that? We're okay with that? Okay, good. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Great job. And with that, next one up is item C4, excuse me, C3, and this is, pardon me, item C3, consideration of adopting three election resolutions to place before city voters at the November 6, 2018 general election, a cannabis tax ballot measure to add to Chapter 3.70 to Title III of the Morbain Municipal Code for Taxation of Commercial Cannabis Operations. Mr. Newmeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, I am presenting to the council a staff report on consideration of three resolutions to send a cannabis tax to the voters, and... And just following along through the staff report, there are three resolutions which, if they're passed and then the voters approve the tax, it's estimated would raise anywhere from $25,000 to $225,000 annually for the city. There's such a wide range, because at this point, we can't accurately predict for sure the revenues from two medical cannabis dispensaries. And I'd like to point out, of course, that this tax would be applicable to any future operations the city did allow down the road. So we could see, of course, more revenue generated if more operations were allowed. The money that would be raised would go into the general fund, and as a matter of background, on November 14, 2017, council adopted an ordinance to regulate commercial cannabis and to allow only two medical marijuana dispensaries. Applications are being accepted July 1, 2018, and also to allow wholesale distribution and deliveries. On April 24, the council considered two tax ordinances, one of them to tax just existing or operations that are allowed right now under existing law, and one to have the voters approve a tax on all possible operations to give flexibility to the council. Council asked for the second one to be brought back after review by the council cannabis subcommittee, composed of council members McPherson and Davis. And the deadline for putting a cannabis tax measure before the voters is August 10, so we're ahead of schedule here. The last regular city council meeting is July 10 that we could actually do this, so there's still some time to work on this if the council has any further changes or revisions they'd like to make. So what we have here before the council, that's the background going into discussion, is three election resolutions. The first one is to submit the proposed ordinance to the voters as a ballot measure. The second one is to authorize arguments and to also direct city attorney to do an impartial analysis, which would go before the voters. And then the third resolution is to authorize rebuttals. We have here the resolutions' due dates for arguments and rebuttals. Those are set at July 27 for arguments and August 6 for rebuttals in consultation with city clerk's office. And moving along then through the staff report again, there's three issues for discussion specifically for the resolutions. On page 148, it says two issues concerning three election resolutions. The first issue is the ballot label. Now, there's a 75-word description of the proposed tax ordinance, which will go before the voters. And with the work of the council cannabis subcommittee, we have come up with a description for the ordinance that is under 75 words and meets legal requirements, and that's on page 152 of the packet. And you can see there in the rectangle, there's a description that says, shall the measure, and then it says, et cetera, et cetera, be adopted. I'd just like to point out that there is room to change this language if the council is inclined to do so. This is the one that the council cannabis subcommittee has brought forward. One option would be to put in there possible programs that could be funded by the tax. I want to emphasize very clearly, though, that this is a general tax, and it's going into the general fund, and none of the money can be committed to any specific program. So at best, we can only put examples in there of what the money might be used for. Second issue to consider, if you turn to page 149, argument authorization. State law provides that when the council sends a ballot measure to the voters, that the council has the first opportunity to write arguments. Assuming that the council would like to authorize a pro argument, they can authorize up to the entire membership of the council to write the argument. However, if you're going to have more than two members cooperate on that, then the Brown Act would require you to do it in an open meeting. So staff's suggesting that you appoint two council members or one to write a pro argument, and there's some blanks in that resolution, Resolution 3918, where the council could decide who they would like to write arguments for the ballot measure, or the council could leave it to the public to submit arguments. And then the third issue, rebuttals. Rebuttal arguments are common in ballot measures, but they're not required by state law. The council doesn't have to authorize them. It's optional, and it's an undetermined amount of money that it would save the city to not print the rebuttal arguments. Right now, we're looking at about probably $13,000 to $14,000 to put the ballot measure before the voters. That cost would go down somewhat if we didn't have rebuttal arguments, but of course, we wouldn't have rebuttals to the arguments in the ballot if we did that. So those are three issues for discussion. At the mayor's pleasure, if you all would want to talk about those now, or I could finish up with the staff report?
Any questions? Red, Matt, John, Marlese?
Okay. Okay, I'll continue then. So the procedures for putting the ballot measure before the voters, it requires a two-thirds vote of the council, and then you need a majority of the voters to approve this general tax. Now, the actual proposed ordinance itself, on page 149 of the staff report, council cannabis subcommittee recommendations, there were two significant changes that the council cannabis subcommittee recommended to the ordinance. That was before the council on April 24. You can see on the first one, tax rates, the cannabis subcommittee wanted to clarify and confirm that the tax rate is no more than 10%, that that's a maximum, and to make it crystal clear that this is just simply a rate to be approved by the voters, but the council can set it lower. And then on page 150 of the staff report, the other big issue is penalties and interest for late payments. The council cannabis subcommittee felt that, again, wanted to emphasize that penalties and interest are definitely going to be maximums. The council can lower them if they'd like to. And also, the issue of penalties for not paying your taxes. The subcommittee is recommending that there be a one-time penalty if you don't pay your taxes of 25%, and then interest keeps accruing. Council, of course, could levy penalties two, three, four times. They could keep it at one penalty as it is now, and the interest rate set at 10%. So these are all just kind of the nuts and bolts of the ordinance, and it's the council's pleasure how they want to set these. And then as for the ordinance itself, this was reviewed on April 24, but briefly in summary on B here on page 150, the rate, it's 10% of the gross receipts of cannabis businesses. And again, this would apply to the two dispensaries that the city's going to allow, and also any future cannabis businesses. 10% of their gross receipts, maximum, and the council could set it at 1%, 5%, 7.5%, wherever they want to set it. And then also for cultivation, $25 maximum per square foot. Cultivation lends itself to a square foot tax. The other types of industries really don't. In fact, you create some sort of, you create sort of counterintuitive market pressures if you tax square footage of, say, manufacturing, because then you're encouraging smaller manufacturing sites, which might be contrary to health and safety. But for cultivation, it's a pretty good metric to use. So these are the two taxes that are being proposed, and again, the council can lower them. If, say, of cultivation, they didn't want to levy the $25 a square foot, you could decide to just levy the gross receipts. It provides a lot of flexibility. For operation, payments will be at a term set by the finance director. After talking with city staff, we thought it'd be good to have some flexibility on whether it's going to be monthly, quarterly, or maybe even annually, depending on what's most efficient for city staff. And again, as mentioned, there's penalties and interest for late payments. And the finance director will be authorized to administer and implement the tax mechanism and the ordinance. And then on the last page of the staff report, page 151, it says future amendments. I want to emphasize that the ordinance is actually expressly allowing the council to make amendments down the road to make it more efficient, to further the purposes of it, so we're not stuck with some ordinance set in stone where there's some mechanics that maybe we should work out later. What is set in stone is the maximum tax rate. If the council wanted to increase the maximum tax rate, it'd have to go back to the voters. Otherwise, it's subject to amendment at future council action. And then also is included is the survey that was with the staff report on April 24, attachment number four to the staff report. It's just a survey of showing taxes in other communities throughout the state on cannabis to give you an idea of these taxes are about in the middle that the council's being asked to send to the voters. So that concludes my staff report. I would ask the council to consider the three issues that were highlighted, starting on page 148 concerning the election resolutions, and then the three election resolutions are presented for consideration and possible approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Great report. We'll start off with questions from council. Marlese, you want to start off?
I don't have any questions.
John?
Thank you, Chris, for, again, very good work and very simple explanation. I did ask you a number of questions earlier. I just wanted to vet a couple of those publicly, if you would bear with me, and re-answer these for me. Let's see, the tax on goods and services sold by an entity, would that include other things like t-shirts or paraphernalia used to consume cannabis, et cetera? Or are there limitations on what the tax would be based on?
The tax actually is a broad collection of a tax on all the proceeds of the cannabis business. So if it's a dispensary, then any proceeds from the sales of goods or services would be taxed. So yes, if they are selling t-shirts or sodas or food or whatever at their store, then that would be part of the gross receipts, and it would be taxed.
Okay, and the penalty is a single penalty and would not be reassessed for whatever term we decided? For instance, if somebody was late one month and continued to be late in their tax payment, the penalty would be a single penalty assessed for that term and then not reassessed for the next term that they were late, if they were late again. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, insofar as for each term, let's say it's monthly, if you don't turn in January's taxes, then you're assessed a penalty. And then if you, say, also didn't turn in February's taxes, you'd get penalized in February's, but January's wouldn't double. The one-time penalty would just remain the one-time penalty, and then interest would keep accruing the whole time until it's paid.
And the last question I had has to do with the issue of an entity that lost its state license being added to, I think, the last section where you had outlined some of the issues. Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to exclude those entities immediately, or how would that work?
So the question was whether we would want to empower the finance director with the authority to revoke the city permit if a state license is revoked. So that would fall under the purview of the community development director, who would be issuing the actual city permits. And there's a clear provision in the commercial cannabis regulatory program for if a state license is revoked or suspended, then immediately the community development director could revoke or suspend the equivalent city permit. As for the taxes, the finance director will be able to lawfully collect taxes from any business that operates in the city, whether they're legal or illegal, they're still going to owe their taxes.
Okay. And I did have one more question. If, at a time in the future, the council authorized recreational or adult-use entities, would this tax apply?
Yes.
Okay. And also, if we decided to authorize a testing facility, this tax would apply?
Yes.
Thank you.
Matt?
Yes, Chris, great information. Thank you. I only have one question. In terms of revisiting these resolutions, would it be at the behest of whatever council or citizen group would bring then, or would it be a yearly reassessment? Or how would that work in the future?
You mean for setting the actual tax rates?
Well, for instance, we pass this, it's passed, we set this tax rate, would it be at the behest of the city, each council for each year, or whenever it would be agendized? Or when would it be revisited?
It would be up to the council to decide if and when they would want to adjust the rate. There's no regular mechanism or calendaring for it.
Okay, so there'd be no sunset provision, it would be open until the council agendizes it?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Red?
Good. Okay, no questions here. That would be, all right, so we'll leave it open. I'm looking at the audience, I don't have any speaker slips, and looking for the audience for a public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. And I'll start off once again to my right, Ms. McPherson.
And I think we need to address all three of these issues that you've asked us to address. So I'm comfortable with your language on page 152, that would appear on the ballot itself. I think that's pretty self-explanatory, and it's under the 75 words, so I'm fine with that. As to writing the arguments, I think I would be in favor of only two people doing it so that we don't have to revisit this again. We have a lot on our plate. And thinking about the issue of rebuttals, I don't know that we actually need that. I think, you know, what we really want to know here is what our community wants us to do, and it's going to give us some direction, I think, also, on where we might want to go with recreational. Our strategy here was to move gradually into first medical and then see what happens. And this ballot measure will send some kind of a signal to us about what our community wants us to do in the future, I think. But as to a rebuttal, I wouldn't, I don't see a need for a rebuttal. So that's the way I would address those three issues, I guess.
John? Thanks. I agree. I would suggest that we consider having the subcommittee, that is so wonderful, do the argument for. That would be my recommendation. And I'm not sure if I was clear on the first item, but I would not be in favor of putting examples of what possible uses in there. I don't know if you addressed that.
I did not, but I liked the language the way it was, and I think it goes in the general fund, and we are better off just saying that.
Ditto.
All right. Matt?
No.
Good. John, Red?
Ditto.
Okay. All right, I'm in favor. Thank you for providing the language, and the process is good. I'm in favor of moving forward, just as is. So, okay. So is that, so I'm not sure where you're going with the subcommittee, but I was just ready to move forward.
To have them write, if somebody has to be appointed. If we have two council people, I would suggest that the subcommittee...
I was just going to leave that to staff.
No, it says council.
And why can't we have staff do that?
The city council is authorized under state law to get first priority for an argument. If staff was authorized to do it, then they would fall down the hierarchy, and the public could actually submit conceivably an argument that would take priority.
Okay.
And actually, on page 166 for the resolution, I'd left some blanks there. So if the council wanted to, wanted to appoint two council members to write the arguments, then they would be authorized there, and we just read that into the resolution.
And do we have language available that is, has been used that you could recommend?
Yeah, absolutely. There have been lots of tax measures that have been out there before the voters throughout California.
Okay, so we'd have some templates to work with?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, then, I will move approval of the three election resolutions. Let's see, do I need to name those?
Actually, I wasn't clear...
Oh, no, it's first reading, I'm sorry.
Well, I wasn't clear if the council was going to approve rebuttals or not, because the third resolution is rebuttal arguments.
We were, I'm sorry, you're right. I guess we all agreed we would not, so.
So that, it would be approval of Resolution 3818 and then Resolution 3918.
So I move approval of Resolution 3818 and 3918, and in addition, for 3819, the first one?
The second one.
The second one, that we appoint the existing subcommittee of council to write the argument for.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. The motion, just to root-rate that data, so the resolution, the motion was to approve Resolution Number 3818 and 3918, and then to appoint the existing cannabis subcommittee that has been working on this. Okay? So that would be Marlese and Red. Okay? And so that's the motion, and that was my...
And that was motion by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Okay. All right. So, and discussion? Yes?
So assuming that the motion passes, Mr. Newmar, will you be providing the subcommittee some template examples of language very soon?
Yes, I can provide some examples of what other cities have used for their pro-arguments.
And very soon would be when?
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Told you they responded.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? None, make motion carries 5-0. All right, great, everybody. All right. All right, great. Item C4, this is the introduction and first reading of ordinance Number 614, amending Section 2.08.090 and subdivision 3.22.120B of the Moore Bay Municipal Code relating to council meeting minutes in terms of citizens' oversight committee, respectively. Ms. Watson, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item is a result of council direction on May 8 at the regular meeting, where the council adopted new council policies and procedures and advisory body bylaws, and considered the current municipal code requirement that minutes be provided in the agenda packet for the next meeting. As the council discussed that, they directed that the policies and procedures include new language as follows. "As soon as reasonably possible following each council meeting, but not later than the second regular meeting after, the city clerk shall include a copy of the minutes thereof as a consent item for the agenda of the regular council meeting." Based on that, staff is bringing back an ordinance that would bring some consistency, but also provide latitude for future councils to amend Municipal Code Section 2.08.090 to remove the statement that minutes must be provided by the next council meeting.
Okay.
Additionally, council directed that we bring back a section that would amend the Citizens' Finance Advisory Committee term, reduce that from six years to four years to be consistent with the other advisory body.
Okay, great, thank you, Dana. And with that, we'll open it for questions from council. And Red, do you want to start us off?
Scott, we've gotten a lot of community feedback opposing the change to the timing of the minutes. What would you have to do in your office to meet the current ordinance consistently?
That's a great question. Minutes aren't something that anybody off the street can do. It's not something I would feel inclined to provide to a part-time employee, for instance. It would necessitate probably at least 20, 15 to 20 more hours a week in the office somewhere to be picked up. But as was identified earlier in our budget discussion just a few minutes ago, we're going to have struggles just to maintain our current levels of service, unfortunately, with CalPERS and other issues that were identified. So the community's going to have a real serious conversation about its priorities and the things that we need to do just to sustain our existing services. And we understand the implications of, and the importance of, I should say, of good governance, something I subscribe to intently, as does my department head staff team. Transparency and accountability is extremely important to us. So we would need to make choices in other areas to provide for staffing on administrative side as opposed to frontline services. So those are the kind of choices that would have to be made. It's not something we can make up with our existing staff time. I do believe that the change that's being proposed is pretty reasonable, and in fact, I know Dana's made efforts with those who are really concerned that perhaps we could look at providing just a brief summary of what occurred the night before, and not getting into the specifics, because that does require you reviewing minute-by-minute the meeting. And some of these minutes are quite long, as you all know. And in between doing that, we also have a significant number of public records requests coming in from some individuals who send multiple public records requests per day. And those can't be ignored. Those are, again, that is us upholding our offices and making sure that we are transparent, providing that information. Those are the balances that we have to take on each day. So I just want to reiterate that we hear the concern from the community. We're trying to find a way to make that a compromise, so that they know where the action that occurred, at least, and then we can fill in the specifics at a later time. It isn't unreasonable to miss one meeting to get it right.
And in fact, our practice for a period of time has been in accordance with the proposed ordinance. And for about how long has that been the case?
I checked periodically over many, many years, and found that often, the minutes were provided at the next meeting, but periodically, it was the second meeting after. I think it just happens based on other workload issues, such as elections and public record requests and other things, that you weren't necessarily able to fit everything in.
Okay. That's helpful. Thanks, Matt?
No questions. Can we get an answer?
John? Marlos?
Actually, my only question was that when we revised the policies and procedures, we actually put that language in it, that it was as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than the second meeting, second regular meeting after. And I'm just curious to know why you maybe did not include that language from the policy in this resolution.
I think that Mr. Panoni wrote the ordinance, but I think the thought was that the municipal code could be less prescriptive, so that it would be, so that future councils could perhaps change policies more easily to provide more policy direction.
But since our policies and procedures manual is already approved, that in fact is the policy that you would be following, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so even though the language here doesn't say that, that's essentially what you're going by.
Yeah, the ordinance kind of defers to the policy for more definition, but they support one another, if that makes sense.
Right, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, just also so that the public is aware of the fact that in fact, we do have a standard of meeting it as quickly as you possibly can. So, thank you.
Okay. I think when, we've had some discussion on this in the past, and I think one of my questions was other cities within the county, and I just chose the county specifically that has an ordinance or policy that requires meeting minutes at the next meeting. And can you elaborate on other cities and even having those types of policies?
I found none that had that type of a policy.
Any policy?
No.
That required meeting minutes being turned around?
And some cities, depending on their staffing levels, are able to always have minutes ready for the next meeting. Interestingly, some cities also just have action minutes, which are very easy to produce. They, you know, and as an example, public comment would only list the names of who spoke. It wouldn't include any explanation of what they said. And then you just have the list of names in the motion. That would be relatively easy to do by the next meeting, but likely not acceptable either.
And so how soon do we post, how soon is our, these council meetings replayed on AGP and then on YouTube?
AGP replays them the next day, and we upload the DVD to YouTube as soon as we receive it from AGP Video, which is often that Friday or the next Monday.
So then, three business days?
Three to four.
Three to four business days, and we've got the...
And then you can watch it at your convenience.
Yeah. And so I'm thinking through a few things there. And then on page C30 of our adopted city budget for city clerk, there's a really nice spreadsheet put together, and it had a list of things that I read last time, and I just want to revisit as well. And this has a lot to do with the gratitude from, you know, council in this budget document, because so much was provided, and this one that I'm looking at was provided, and I think it's very helpful, because it's not just for the city clerk, but every department has this matrix. And so I think I'm done with questions. I'm almost getting into discussion. So I think maybe I'll wait before I get there, and then I'll go to public comment first. So I think I was leading myself a little bit ahead. If there's no other questions, I think I'll open it for public comment, and I'm waiting, and there's no public, any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back. And if you don't mind, I'll just jump into discussion, since I was leading there at that point, yeah. So first of all, you know, appreciate the feedback that we've been getting. I know Moore Bay Action Team has been, I think they came about through the 2016 election. And it was, I think it was not just locally, but nationally, and there are other action groups that have been involved in communities and are looking to do that. And it's, and we, I think, it's a benefit for us. And so we've been responsive to other particular items that have come up, and this one specifically, where it came up and it says, hey, you're not getting your meetings, meeting minutes back per your municipal code. Interestingly enough, I think we, as council, refer to our policies and procedures, and not, and I wasn't necessarily aware of the municipal code. So as we dove into that, it's like, okay, we do have the municipal code, and, oh, by the way, we didn't really find anybody else that had that within the county. So it's prudent for us to have that discussion on what we do with this municipal code, and which is what we're doing. We heard from folks tonight that, you know, asked to have the meeting minutes, and there are some reasonings behind that, both for the sake of if there was any particular issue, and it was timeliness to file a protest, to have the meeting minutes available. And, you know, based on the comments we've had, we have AGP Video that provides source of record and YouTube source of record to guide people for that. So I think we're, there is that ability. And then, then it comes down to if we have the municipal code and we're not meeting that, okay, what are we going to do to meet it? Can we meet it? Or do we have to make some adjustments? That's where we are tonight. And I would highlight that with this piece of paper that I have out, this is off the adopted budget, it says for 2017-18, number of Public Records Act requests for 2017 processed, 120. 120. Pardon me?
We're at 150 right now.
Up to 150. 150, yeah. So that's an enormous amount of time. And then, Dana, you're going on a vacation, and so we'll be down your talent, and deservedly so the vacation, but, you know, there's another factor into how we turn around meeting minutes. And I would say that practically speaking, this is reasonable. And I think there are other, there are the mechanisms in place to provide the data people need. I don't think, my understanding is, the city passerables doesn't have recorded council meetings. So we, as far as transparency goes, we have our council meetings recorded, and we have YouTube. I think it's, that's pretty transparent. And then I guess it comes down to average response time to, I'm just going to read this, and this is the sheet that's on the budget document that was, this applied to us. The average response time to Public Records Act request is five days. Percentage of city council minutes prepared within 45 business days, 82%. And this is the first time we've put this together, so, you know, maybe there's no real record to compare to. But from other conversations, there, from my understanding, there are some cities that are months behind in their meeting minutes. And that's not to say that that's the standard. It's just a point of conversation that I'm elaborating now. Now I feel like I'm more of the talkative one at this point. So, so at this point, and thanks for indulging me in these conversations, but, you know, respectfully, I think we do take the responsibility of transparency and good governance seriously. And I think that's the one reason why we brought it back to have this discussion, because there's municipal code that said, this is what we should do. What do we do to meet it? And if we can't, what is a reasonable policy that we could have in place? I believe it's a reasonable policy, and I believe that the mechanisms that are in place provide all the things available to the community to respond to any complaints, because the view of the AGP Video on YouTube of the meetings, meeting minutes are actually the meetings. So those are my comments. I would go ahead and, I'm in favor of the recommended language, both for our policy for the Oversight Committee adjustment and the adjustment to the ordinance Number 614 as written. And those are my comments. And I'll look to my left, Red, to lead us off in his discussion points.
I'm with you, Mayor.
Matt?
I too. I agree, Dana, you, great presentation, and then considering all we do with public information, I agree with this, and I totally want to move forward with it.
John?
Thank you for the expose, Mayor. I appreciate that.
I don't often get to do that.
No, that's, it's great, you know, thanks for recapping it, honestly. I too want to just thank the public that brought this forward. You know, minutes are extremely important to review and are representative of transparency. I too spoke to Dana a couple of weeks ago, and just asked about workload, and I saw to the left of her office, a pile of boxes, and I just asked what it was, and she said that's one of my responses to public record requests, and they're quite voluminous. And if you have had a chance to review those like we have, we get copies of those requests usually by email. They're not just simple one-page responses. They sometimes require very deep digging, and so I appreciate that. This is one of those times where budgeting and fiscal responsibility outweighs the need to be more responsive with regard to the timing, in my opinion, and I'm agreeing with you on our minute turnaround. And perhaps as an added suggestion, in the organizations that I ran, we eventually went to very limited minutes that referred to the taped component or section of the meeting that could be looked at to get further detail. And that just might be something for staff to think about doing, since we have the visual available. How easy is it to say, you know, with Section 3.2, you know, here was the action, and there's where you can find the discussion? Just throwing that out. But thank you for what you do. I agree with the ordinance, and I just wanted to add that support.
Thanks, Marlos. Thanks, John. Marlos?
Yes. I too support the ordinance. I just wanted to add, I don't, however, hope that we go to those kinds of minutes, because when I was on the Public Works Advisory Board, that's the kind of minutes we got, and it was not helpful. I'm so grateful for these minutes with this kind of detail. I just want to also add, though, that I think it's really important, because we did hear the public, and I can appreciate that, and I want them to know that we did listen and did consider, and again, you do have to weigh the cost of it versus the benefit of it. And in this case, the ordinance was written before there was videotaping, so you can understand that it might have been more important to get the minutes in a timely way. But now that we have that capability of almost instantaneously looking at the minutes, it becomes less significant to get the minutes instantaneously. So I do support the ordinance, and I also support the change in the...
Oversight Committee.
Yeah, the Oversight Committee, so.
Okay. Okay, with that, we can go ahead and move with staff recommendation?
So moved?
Don't we, don't we have to read the...
No, this is the first reading, so you do. Thanks, Red.
Just, let's just read it? Just... This is just a reading on the first.
I would suggest us reading the recommendation in the report, which also includes the key that we're waiving, actually reading it line by line, which should be stated. So I'd read the recommendation on, and then change it into, you know, making a motion to approve ordinance Number 614, accept public comment, et cetera.
So you, okay, I'll move that we accept ordinance Number 614, accept public comment, and make a motion, a motion that we introduce first reading of ordinance 614 by number entitled only, amending Section 2.08.090 and subdivision 3.22.120B of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to council timing for preparation of council meeting minutes and terms of Citizens Oversight Committee, respectively.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Mr. Davis. Further discussion? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, that concludes item C4. And last item on the agenda, declaration of future agenda items? Any future agenda items?
Mayor, just wanted to suggest that we agendize the duties and responsibilities of the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee to consider adding routine review of budget and budget quarterly and midterm and third quarter reports. If that, because it's not codified right now. I just wanted to just, you brought it up. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. They are reviewing that. I'd like to see them continue.
So I'm thinking, I think we have the, we understand the general language. I mean, I was trying to think if that's something we could just, if we understand the general language in what we want, could we just do that and put it back and put it on consent, since we've just done our policies and procedures? Just add the language that includes that?
I'm fine with that. Sure. Absolutely.
So maybe, can you just read that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I would just, while we're under future agenda items, would like to add to the duties and responsibilities of CFAC, a routine review of the annual budget and the quarterly, midterm, first quarter, midterm, and third quarter reviews prior to coming to council.
Okay. And so since it's already in there, your review in the annual budget, then realistically we just want to just add routine quarterly reports that come to council?
Financial reports.
Financial reports.
Right. Jen, is that, you look like you needed to say something. It's okay. Go ahead.
No, I don't need to say anything. We're all good. Thanks.
All right. So basically, just add language that adds routine quarterly reports, go to CFAC, add that to the language of that, and then that can come back on.
If possible, yeah.
If possible, right. And then, yeah, thank you.
I wanted to go to them.
Yeah. And then, and then that can just come back on consent.
I'm good with that. Sure.
Okay. All right. So do we have unanimous support for that change? Okay. All right. Thank you. And so just covering my bases on that for Dana as well. And then with that, any other, any future agenda items? Seeing none. Our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, June 26, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. at the Veterans Memorial Hall. And with that...
Special meeting tomorrow night?
And we do have a meeting tomorrow. We'll do that one more announcement, and that announcement is for...
5:00 p.m.?
5:00 o'clock tomorrow, and that is right here in the Veterans Memorial Hall. So we do have a special meeting. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Good night.